Okay, the meeting, the special town council meeting for the budget workshop is now in session. We will do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Looks like it's, uh, public participation is limited today, so far, yeah.
They had all separate meetings.
That's right.
The one person.
Okay, council discussion. Sherry, I guess that's your cue, huh?
Yes.
Okay.
I think that we've been having trouble writing. And there was a, I think, thing that got missed to help it in the book. And so you have a section called public works. You might have noticed that the tab for public works is me and that was not what Paul, that was him. So it was just an overtime of getting that into the book. And, and it is a single page for.
Oh, thank you. And then there's a single page for, um, the, um, social media outsourcing that you can put in the very back of the administration section.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so, um, the agenda for the, the work sessions, um, so we have scheduled for today, um, tomorrow and Wednesday if needed. Um, we're, we're thinking that we will be done by the end of tomorrow. Um, we will go over big picture, um, overview, uh, where things stand overall in the budget. We'll look at the individual funds and those summaries. We'll go through the departmental budgets. And then if there's any wrap up discussion, discussion at the end, um, as needed, then we'll, we'll do that. So that's kind of the plan. Um, I have here the goals for the work session, so, um, definitely making sure the council understands what is in, um, the proposed budget. The legal requirement is that, um, no expenditure can be made without a per, for a purpose not authorized in the adopted budget. Um, I have mentioned before that, um, the forms that we actually adopt, that the state auditor general's office puts out are very high level. So, um, it's based off a department. So if all of a sudden we had some new department that was never considered before, um, it really should have been considered in the budget process. Drilling down further than that is just not in those forms. Um, the work session helps us get to the point of determining what our cap will be for our budget. So the legal requirement is that the tentative budget establishes what our expenditure cap is. So today we want to make sure to talk about anything that you want to see changed in the budget, whatever that might be, so that we know that we're setting, um, what the cap would be for the budget. This is related to home rule. The home ruled the last election in August of 2024 establishes, um, home rule for us for fiscal year 26 through fiscal year 29. Um, and also we want to make sure we're discussing the town's financial capacity for addressing the priorities and, and the items that are in the budget. And the legal requirement there is that we must adopt a balanced budget that's in statute and, um, what we have presented for you today is in, in balance. Um, last week on April 8th, we had an open house. Uh, there wasn't a whole lot of, uh, attendance, uh, at that. Um, but we did get one recommendation from a, a citizen. Uh, we presented the, uh, preliminary budget and some historical information on the budget. There have been a few slight tweaks since then, but nothing all that significant. Uh, we did talk about the budget structure and the supplemental requests and CIP projects. The only thing that the citizen recommended was a priority for open space preservation. So I wanted to cover for you your books that you have before you. Um, in the front pocket of your book, there's a, a large size of the list of the supplemental requests. Um, it's folded in the front pocket. The, um, I put in my book, I put at the very beginning, I put my hard copy of, of the PowerPoint that we're going through right now, but there's a tab for overall and fund summaries. In that section, we have a, a summary by fund of what the total budget is on the first page. After that is a page where it's all funds with showing a comparison of what fiscal year 24 actuals were, 25 budget and estimates and the 26, um, base budget and supplementals for a total proposed. Um, then there's a page that shows the summary of the overall budget changes and I have a, a summary of that in the slides that we'll go through. Uh, we will be talking about the individual funds, so those pages are in your book in that section. Then, um, as part of the book, the supplemental list that you have the big version in front pocket, there's a smaller version in the book, which is part of the electronic version that's online. Um, and then we have the list of the CIP projects for the five-year plan. Um, after that, you'll see tabs for the various departmental budgets. The plan is to go through these in the order that the tabs are to make it easier to navigate through the book. If there is a reason to jump around, we can do that, but that, that's been the plan is to go in that order. Within the departmental sections, you will see the narrative, which includes accomplishments, goals, um, the performance measures that council had adopted last July. Um, there will be a, uh, summary of the expenditures for the base budget, a listing of the FTEs for the base budget, any supplemental request that that particular department has requested. And then if that department has any CIP projects, then those project detail sheets are in that section. Um, the structure of the budget for fiscal year 26, so I mentioned earlier, so base budget. So this is part of the operating budget as opposed to the CIP budget. So the operating budget, um, we use the fiscal year 25 adopted budget as a baseline for our base budget. It represents current programs and service levels. Then we asked the departments to submit a supplemental request for anything that was over and above base budget. So if it was something that was a new program or enhanced service level, um, some, some change in, in what they're offering, then we asked them to do a supplemental request and the forms require them to fill out different narrative sections to justify their request. Um, then, um, so that's the, what comprises the operating budget, then the CIP budget is the five-year CIP plan that is for, um, significant capital assets. So we're using a, a cost amount of a hundred thousand and life of three years or more as our threshold. Um, so it could be acquisition of an asset, construction of an asset, um, something that extends the useful life of the asset can all be considered a capital improvement project. And this all kind of leads to accounting rules of what can be capitalized. Uh, we also include in the CIP plan, we do include studies that, um, lead to activities that would, would, um, identify a CIP project, uh, because they're so closely linked. So that's very commonplace that most places do that as a master plan, something along those lines would be included in CIP. There are a few things that we are, um, proposing as changes in the fiscal year 26 budget. Um, I did talk about these during the council retreat, um, so as a reminder, um, we are setting up a capital improvements fund. The capital improvement projects in the general fund, um, you, you see it some places, um, but most places tend to have a separate fund. And it really helps with having the money that you have in the general fund, designating it to some place such as capital projects that the state, when they're looking at our budgets and saying, wow, they sure have a lot of money. When it's in a fund designated for, oh, they have this money for capital improvement, it helps with that process. Um, the trails fund that we added, so this is something where, um, the spur cross half cent sales tax, whatever is left over spur cross, um, the next hundred thousand of that goes to the trails. And so separately tracking that and having that be something, because my understanding is that there are council members that see that as a priority and want, want to see what goes on with the trails. Uh, the streets fund was previously just the HERF fund, highway user revenue, which is primarily the gas tax monies that the state shares with the municipalities. Um, it's more common to show all the streets activities in the fund, not just HERF dollars only. Uh, because you also end up in situations where, oh, for whatever reason that year, not everything got spent to the HERF dollars. And then that's another red flag for the state of, you guys keep complaining that you don't have enough HERF money and yet you have money left over in the fund. Well, no, we don't. We haven't, we're doing this as a streets fund, showing that we're having to subsidize with general fund dollars to be able to cover our streets costs. Um, there was a, a couple of changes with moving things between operating and CIP. So streets rehab, uh, pavement preservation, um, was in CIP, where a CIP really should be new roads, major improvements, widening of a road. Uh, the pavement preservation, streets rehab really would be an operating, uh, cost. So we have moved those out. Um, and then there was some debt payments that were in CIP that we have moved out as well. Um, part of, uh, what we have done in this process, looking at our reserves. And so you'll see in the proposed budget, recommendations for, um, vehicle and equipment replacement reserves. Um, and another thing is that, uh, there are policies that, um, I am proposing to bring to council revisions to the policies for reserves. There is an operating reserve and a contingency reserve. Um, there are a lot of things that people name this. Sometimes they call it a rainy day fund. Um, some, they, sometimes they call it operating reserve, contingency reserve. They really all basically mean the same thing. So having an operating reserve and a contingency reserve is really pretty redundant. Um, so, uh, I have recommendations, um, on that. Uh, in the past, CIP budgets were, for a new project, were set at whatever the total cost of the project was and not the portion of the cost that was expected to be spent in that particular year in year one. And so we've changed that. So it's not the total project cost, it is, um, what we do expect, um, to be spent in year one. And then also part of what we've done is did, uh, cost allocations to utility funds. So, um, those from the, the private sector, from the corporate world may be familiar with overhead. Um, and the allocation of overhead to the cost of the goods or services that are being provided. In the government world, we refer to it as indirect costs and we do indirect cost allocations. There were attempts at doing direct allocation of some cost to the utility funds, but it really wasn't capturing everything that, um, really should have been, uh, attributable to the utility funds. So we have included cost allocations in the, um, proposed budget. Um, so I did want to talk a little bit about budget versus forecast. So a forecast is a tool, um, for planning, uh, decision-making. It is not something that council adopts. It's not something legally, legally required. Um, typically you're going to have a variety of scenarios um, and looking at what different, uh, decisions, uh, might, how it might impact a forecast. As opposed to the budget, this is a state requirement. We are legally required to adopt a budget. Um, it will set the cap for what our expenditures are. Um, and in Arizona, the way Arizona law is written, the intent for the conservative approach with a budget is to set it at the maximum of what you might possibly need. Uh, because there aren't a lot of provisions and there's a lot of hurdles for trying to overcome that. So it's really the way state law was designed. You set it as high as you think you might need it. Um, once a budget is adopted, it does not mean that people just get to go and spend, uh, based off of whatever is in the budget. It is the plan for the year, but contracts, anything, um, for a purchasing authority would still need to come to council unless it's within, um, the town manager's authority. So I wanted to take a look at what Jim Rounds had presented, um, a couple of weeks ago. So he made a comment about this scenario that he had that I don't think he was really clear in his point about what he was showing. And so I'm not sure everyone understood. So in this particular scenario, so he was looking at basically an average of 4.8% expenditure growth per year. Not that he was saying that he thinks that that's the percentage that we should be targeting, but he, what he was looking at was setting a percentage based off of, what does it take at the end of the 10 years? That we're basically out of money because he, in his mind, he's saying that helps with decision-making of knowing you need to stay under that amount because you're spending to zero. He was not saying that this is an anticipated forecast of what it might look like. Um, he did have, um, uh, Luis Cordova, his, his, um, coworker, uh, run a scenario and verbally he said that, um, at 2%, it was over 14 million at the end. Um, I asked him to send us, um, another scenario based off of something that was a little more likely. Um, so he sent me one with 3%. And so at the 3%, he's showing at the end of the 10 years, there's 13 million left. Um, so I know for me, like seeing things visually is, uh, more helpful than, um, just talking about things. So, um, I just wanted to make sure that that was clear because I don't know if everyone understood what he was showing. Yeah, a little box is in the way. Okay. Any questions on the forecast?
On, on the technique or on, on the actual numbers? We, we're not there yet.
Uh, on, on the technique and what Jim Rounds had presented and stuff. Okay. Okay. Um, so I'm going to go over the overall proposed budget next. Um, so looking at the, uh, proposed number, so the first column that we have here, and let's see if the pointer will work here. Give me the large pointer. So the first column here is the, um, the fiscal year 25 budget. And to, to go through what I have here, so these numbers are in millions. Um, when the fiscal year 25 budget was being put together, fiscal year 24 was not complete. So just like right now, fiscal year 25 is not complete. So they had to estimate what they thought they would start with the year. They did not have an actual number. So they estimated 37.5 million. Then they estimated that for fiscal year 25, um, budget, that they would have 38.1 million in revenues. The other financing sources was related to the portion they expected to draw down of the Phoenix interconnect whiff alone of 7.9 million. And then they back out and this follows the approach that the, um, state auditor general's office budget forms, um, follow. Um, they estimated that reserves at the end of fiscal year 25 that they would have in place was 4.7 million. And that meant that total resources available to spend was 78.8 million. The budget that was set up for fiscal year 25 was 57.6 million. So there were excess resources available of 21.2 million. That means that for fiscal year 25, the budget could have been 21.2 million higher and still been, been in balance. Now, I'm not suggesting that that's what we want to do because we have money set aside for a variety of things, but that is how they determine whether or not your budget is in balance. So the total ending balance, um, for fiscal year 25, based off of budget numbers was 26 million. When we go over to the next column, so the fiscal year 25 estimates, you can see that the, um, the actual number for fiscal year 24 ending, which became the fiscal year 25 beginning, was a little bit higher than what they estimated. So it really was 38.5 million. The revenues were a bit less, um, at 32.7 million. Uh, part of that is going to be the 3 million, um, that is set up each year of just in case we get some grant. Um, so that'll be part, a big part of that number. Um, the other financing sources, um, so the drawdown that we have estimated for fiscal year 25, uh, the whiff alone for the Phoenix interconnect is 6.7 million. The reserves are estimated at 5.1 so that, um, our estimate shows 72.8 million in resources available. We're estimating expenditures to be 47.1. So as I had mentioned, when we're, um, setting a budget, Arizona law encourages you to set it at maximum levels as your conservative approach. So 57 million and really only 47.1, uh, million is where we're estimating expenditures will be. So that leaves excess resources available higher than what was anticipated at the budget time of 25.7 million and a total ending balance of 30.8 million.
Sherry, I, 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 we have so many fund balances in these papers, but the numbers that, that you gave us in the book don't match that.
The, this is totals. So if you look at, um, in the overall section, overall dash two, that's where these numbers are coming from. So this is the grand total of all funds.
What page?
Overall dash two. And it's also at the top of the slide.
Oh, I see.
So I have in the slides throughout, um, identification of where, what page numbers in the book. Um, where these, where you can find these items.
And, and that, uh, and the, uh, the, the fun pull down, how much did, uh, I thought the interconnect project was funded without pulling out of the general fund. Is that true or false?
There, there was nothing from the general fund. This is, this is grand total all funds.
In what? So.
So we're looking at the total budget right now. We're not looking at.
You know, we're, uh, we've got the rounds work. We've got this work. All that chills, the trajectory, an alarming trajectory of spending that is, uh, far greater than our resources and pulling that general fund down. So I, I mean, that, that's going to be my.
In total, this, what, what we're looking at right now is the total budget, not just general fund. So it's everything.
Mm-hmm.
So monies that were set aside for capital, like the water infrastructure money that was set aside to be spent on the Phoenix interconnect, you have a drawdown on that. That's in these numbers.
Okay. And so, and that was the lady here. Correct?
So that was in fiscal year 25. So this fiscal year, we used up the portion that was allocated for the water infrastructure money first before utilizing debt financing.
Before utilizing debt financing?
Yes.
Why would we do that?
Because if we, if we could go into less debt, the thought at the, at that point in time was that if we could, you, go into less debt, that that would be better.
We, we used the ARPA money. Do you remember that? The, um, that was used.
Well, we borrowed 13 million and then we had 2 million we got for the, uh, recovery act.
Right.
That's 15.
Yes, that, there was, um, uh, almost 4 million, a little over 4 million in, uh, water infrastructure money that was designated towards the Phoenix interconnect. So that it was budgeted that way.
Okay.
And then we'll have 2 million of the congressionally directed spending, um, that will go towards the Phoenix interconnect as well.
And that didn't get expended in, in, um, in last year's budget.
Fiscal year 24.
This year's budget. Right?
Which.
I mean, did we dramatically underspend? We had a $57 million budget and we spent, last I saw it was 35.
So that, the estimate that we have in, in the book for in total, all the funds of the 57 million, only spending 47 million. So being 10 million under budget in grand total.
Overlooking at this thing here? Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Yeah. So, um, what we estimated for fiscal year 25 of an ending balance of 30.8 million, that's the number we're rolling forward over as the fiscal year 26 proposed, um, beginning number, the 30.8 million. So, um, this is all based off of like formulas calculating how much is your beginning balance? How much are your resources that you're adding to it? How much are you subtracting as expenditures that gives you your ending? So if the estimates are spot on, and that's exactly where we're going to be, then 30.8 million is where we would start. It's really an estimate. Uh, we tend to, on the revenue side, be a little conservative. I like to be as realistic as I possibly can, but still have some conservative element in the estimation of revenues. So revenues probably will be a little bit higher. Um, just i- in my years of doing this, and you know, this is my first year here at Cave Creek, but other places, um, and I don't think it's going to be a whole lot different here. When you ask departments to estimate how much they spend, they typically end up estimating a little bit high and then expenditures end up being lower than what they said. So in all likelihood, the 30.8 million that we're seeing will end fiscal year 25 with, will likely be a higher number. But that's the formula in how it calculates. So we're starting with 30.8 for fiscal year 26. So the proposed base column, um, we've got 36.2 million estimation of revenue. Um, estimated other financing sources, 9.2 million. This comes out of the work session that we had a couple of weeks ago, um, where, uh, Kevin Burnett from Willdan was going through some modeling and we were looking at doing a lot of debt financing of, of amounts. So it was 9.2 million, um, for pro, capital projects in the utility funds during 26. Um, estimating 5.1 million again on the reserves, um, that would be available at the end of the year for June 30, which leaves total resources available of 71.1 million. Estimated expenditures from a base budget perspective, 51.6 million, which leaves excess resources available of 19.4. So again, the budget could be 19.4 million higher and still be in balance. Um, so that.
Mayor, good question.
Okay. Just, this is free fall, free for all.
For the estimated revenues, uh, Sherry, why, why do you feel like it's going to be above what the 2025 estimates are at 32.7 million?
Um, so let's see, that was, um, the intergovernmental, um, amounts, um, were, are higher on that part. So.
Like state share revenue.
Yeah.
And, um, another question on that revenue side, um, on, this is on your overall page one, charges for services was a category and I wasn't sure what is included in the charges for services.
Um, so it, it kind of depends on which fund we're talking about. So like the utility funds, it's going to be all the rate fees that are charged. Um, and then in the general fund, there's all sorts of things that, that get charged, uh, like plan reviews. Um, charges for copies. I mean, it's a wide variety of, of things that we charge.
And one more question, the urban revenue sharing.
So urban revenue sharing is the state sharing its income tax.
Okay.
Um, with the municipalities.
State shared revenues, is that the same thing?
Yeah. So they call it state shared. They call it urban revenue sharing. Um, urban revenue sharing is, tends to be the more common terminology, terminology that's used.
Okay, thank you.
Vehicle license tax and state share sales tax, or is that urban?
So, so the urban revenue sharing is just the income tax. Um, generically, state shared revenue is a variety of these line items here. So there's the state shared sales tax. So that's state shared revenues, the urban revenue sharing, the auto lieu, um, tax. So that's state shared revenues as, as well, as well as the HERF money, um, the gas tax money. So the, those all qualify as state shared.
Is there a page in the book that shows us year by year, previous years, like, it seemed like a lot of money to me and I thought that we were going to be cut in our state shared revenues. Is it more or less than it was in FY '24?
Um, so on page. So on page two, in the ongoing revenues, the fourth line, fifth line down is the urban revenue sharing. So you can see fiscal year twenty four was one million, three sixty. The estimate for fiscal year twenty five is one million ninety five. So it has gone down.
Okay.
So that was one of the things of the, the state was actually taking action to lower taxes. And so we are seeing the impact of that. We are seeing a little bit of information that we're getting from the league of possibly a little bit of an uptick on that. So I estimated it one million, one oh six.
Yeah, that's like, you know, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars less.
Correct. Okay. And so for fiscal year twenty six, so it's twenty four point five million is what the ending balance is. The next column is the supplemental requests that have been recommended. So you can see there's estimated revenues of one point three million. So there's a MAG grant that Hal was lucky enough to get, you probably have heard about, that is included in the supplementals. The estimated expenditures of two point four million, so that one point three million offsets a huge amount of those supplementals. And then the proposed total, so we're starting with that thirty point eight million that we're estimating, estimating we're going to end fiscal year twenty five with. We'll begin fiscal year twenty six. We're estimating revenues of thirty seven point five. The other financing source is nine point two. The reserve balances five point three million. So that gives us total resources available of seventy two point two with a, a proposed budget of fifty four million in expenditures. That means we would have excess resources available of eighteen point two and estimated ending balance of twenty three point five million. So again, this is all, if everything lined up exactly with these numbers, that's where we would be. The thirty point eight might be a little conservative that we're starting the year with, might be a little bit higher. Revenues might be a little bit higher. Expenditures typically would be lower. So we'd probably end the year with more than twenty three point five.
Sherry, so i- i- if you're, the fiscal year twenty twenty five estimate thirty point eight, and then we had previously agreed that we would take some of the money out of the reserve to pay for the overages in the interconnect project. And that's roughly equivalent, it looks like, to the difference between those two, about six million.
There is no general fund money plan to, to go towards the Phoenix Interconnect.
But it's, it's reserve money.
But there's nothing from general fund going to the, the Cave Creek Water Fund related to Phoenix Interconnect, because those funding sources are going to cover it.
What funding sources?
So there was the ARPA money. There's the congressionally directed spending money. There's the water infrastructure money and the WIFALO.
That's going to cover it all? Then why are we pulling six million dollars?
So we'll go through each one of the funds and, and you'll see. But one of the things was acceleration of the street projects that council had decided on a couple of years ago. So that's impacting the couple of years here. There's some, there's some one-time costs related to the regional fire station that would be bringing some of that down. Some of it is just capital spending, some of it is subsidies, wastewater, the cash loans that are still needed for Desert Hills. So we had talked about those during the work session a couple of weeks ago.
Well, my, my issue with this, it's going to be an issue all the way along, is that we should not be low, we should not be using reserves for ongoing expenses. And it appears here that we are doing that. Is that correct? Am I, am I reading that right?
So we are having to subsidize the utility funds.
Well, if you got two point four million supplemental, that's not coming from, I mean, our, our revenues are flat, so that two point four is not coming from revenue.
Well, one point three million of it is in grant form. So that leaves you one point one million and a, and a significant portion of that is going to be one-time costs, not ongoing costs.
You'll see those as we go through. You'll see what those supplements are in, in further detail, which are the one-time and which are the ongoing.
Okay.
And we will be seeking your council direction on those.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, if, if there is anything that comes out, any ongoing expense that comes out of reserves, I will be against. As a flat, that is just not good practice.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
We're, and that's not what we're trying to do here.
Okay.
So.
Okay. So I have a chart here for you of the last three fiscal years that have been audited. The first, this blue line is what the total budgets were. So in fiscal year twenty two, forty million, fiscal year twenty four, fifty six point six million. The orange line is how much the expenditures were. So you can see the orange line is well below what the total budget amount was. So there's some history here, and I bet if I went back more years, you would see a similar trend. It's very, very common, the way you see this trend. This kind of dark green line here in the middle, that's fund balances. It is above the orange line each one of those years. So we have more than one year's worth of expenditures in our fund balances. So we have a very healthy bottom line at this point. So looking at the proposed expenditures based off of type, so you can see, starting at the top right personnel slice of the pie, that darker blue, seven point nine million or fourteen point five percent of the pie. Going around the big orange slice is the ongoing non-personnel related cost. So that's about thirty percent of the pie. The bottom left, the lighter blue, is the CIP project. So that's the biggest piece of the pie here, thirty one point four percent. Debt service fairly significant at the ten point three. And then the contingencies, seven point eight million. So we have four point two million of contingencies built into the budget. So that's one of the places where very easily that we would, could potentially not spend what the entire amount of the budget is. And that's usually why you see some of the big differences on that chart previously, with the budget being higher and expenditures actually coming in lower. It's part of making sure there's adequate capacity, setting the budget at maximums of whatever it could possibly be to meet with the, the state is anticipating us to do. Looking at it from the perspective of by fund, so on the top right, the kind of blue, bluish area, general fund, fourteen point one million, twenty six percent of the pie. We have several of the other funds, they're quite a bit smaller. But if you look at the left side of the pie, so you've got Desert Hills Water, Cave Creek Water and Wastewater. Those three sections of the pie add up to more than fifty percent. So you can see that utilities is a very big part of our budget and what we're doing here.
Aren't most of the capital improvements also part of that?
Yes.
So really, you might want to shift.
Well, the cap, this is capital improvements fund on this particular slide.
Understand, but most of the capital improvements we talk about are regarding utilities. So it's actually about sixty percent of the budget, or close to it.
So the, the capital improvements fund is CIP projects that are not utility related. So in like, say, Key Creek Water, this kind of reddish area, that includes the CIP projects for Cave Creek Water Fund.
So what capital improvements were we talking about at four million dollars?
We'll, we'll be going through all of those. One of them is just a placeholder of the balance in the open space fund of just in case an opportunity comes up, over one point five million, just in that alone. There are a few road projects that are not operating, that are not pavement preservation, road rehab, that are, there's widening on one of them, and so new, we'll get there on that slide. So looking at the overall budget, I did a reconciliation of what the amounts from the fiscal year twenty five budget were to the fiscal year twenty six. And I separated out based off of operating and CIP, so you can see what those differences are. So to start off with, the first line that I have there is the CIP projects in the Cave Creek Water Fund in total are going down almost six point three million. A big part of that is the significant progress made on the Phoenix Interconnect project. Then we are moving pavement preservation from CIP to operating, as we discussed earlier. So that's taking about two point one million out of CIP and moving it into the operating budget. The fire station is completed this fiscal year, so there are no fire CIP projects in the budget. So decreasing CIP by about two point seven million. Then the next line, the operating budget, there's an increase for the non-personnel costs that are ongoing related to the regional station that's added. So that's one point six million. And then the next line is one-time costs related to the regional station of seven hundred and eighty one thousand. So part of the IGA agreement was, with Daisy Mountain, is that we would pay for getting the employees hired in advance, helping to get them through the academy, getting them all their turnout gear and all the various things that they need to be ready when the station opens. There are supplemental requests included of two point three million. Then we have increases in personnel costs, about five percent, three hundred and fifty four thousand. The debt service, because of the WIFALO payments for the Phoenix Interconnect, those who began debt services going up about six hundred and sixty thousand. And then some other miscellaneous changes. I could keep going all day for small dollar amounts, and so just lumped it all together. So with those changes, the operating budget is increasing twenty seven percent. The CIP budget going down forty percent. And my little thing over there is covered up, so the total budget going down six percent.
Are the MAG funds in that two million, one hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, is it really separate? The MAG funds for Morningstar, et cetera?
Right, so those are over and above. So it's in addition to, they're included in the supplemental request line of the two point three million.
The, so, so you have two lines there that have pavement, one is pavement and one is down supplemental?
Yeah, it's included. So all the supplementals are in the ones.
So we're already spending three and a half million dollars on roads this coming year, according to this budget?
Right, yeah, about that.
Okay.
And this, this table here is also on overall dash three in your books. Looking at the revenue side, so the sales tax or TPT tax, transaction privilege tax is estimated at a grand total in all of the base TPT, the construction, sales tax, bed tax, all of that at fourteen point two million, which represents thirty percent of the pie. And that is our largest piece of the pie. State shared revenue of two point five million represents five point four percent of the pie. So substantial, but not the, not the largest area. For the utilities, so the charges for services there, eleven point eight million, representing about twenty five percent of the pie. And we have some other intergovernmental for some grants, including the three million placeholder for any potential grants that we don't know about yet. And also up near the top left, debt financing of nine point two percent or almost twenty percent of the pie.
Sherry, not to nitpick, but so on this slide, you called it state shared revenue versus urban?
Because I'm talking about all the state shared revenue categories. So the state shared sales tax, the state shared gas tax, all of that.
Okay.
Okay, so the nine point two million on the debt financing, so again, that was based off of the work session a couple of weeks ago, looking at the rate study. I did want to talk a little bit about the debt that we have with the utility funds. So as of July one, twenty twenty five, when we've made the, the payment that is due, we will then have remaining twenty four point three million in total debt. And you can see the, the biggest piece of the pie is because of the Phoenix Interconnect project. So for Cave Creek Water, WIFALOs more than one that are based off of a pledge of the utility revenue, fifteen million or sixty one percent of the pie. As we go around, so there is a WIFALO that used excise tax as the pledge. So that's a, a small amount. There's a WIFALO for Desert Hills Water that used the revenue of the system as the pledge. There's a very small amount for final payment on the CIP agreement for past costs. The Desert Hills Water had a private placement bond that is based off of a pledge of excise tax and then wastewater. The private placement there is also based off of a pledge of excise tax. And so if we go on to the next slide, so I do have the dates. We did talk about these in the, the work session a couple of weeks ago. So with the current debt that we have now, before we enter in, in, into additional debt, so wastewater's current debt would be paid off in twenty twenty nine. Cave Creek Water, the debt there because of the Phoenix Interconnect and just entering into that, and it was a thirty-year loan that was entered into, so payoff on that would be twenty fifty three. Desert Hills Water, the current debt that they have would be paid off in twenty twenty eight. This is out of the ACFAR, and I basically just copied over this slide from my presentation when we went over the ACFAR. So this is what the coverages were for fiscal year twenty four. So for the Desert Hills WIFALOs, it's actually in a good spot. The, the revenue-based loans require a one and a half times. So they're at two, two and a half times. For Cave Creek Water, we're just barely over the one and a half times at the one point five five. And the excise tax with the loans and private placement bonds is in a very good spot at almost six and a half.
So as the original Cave Creek Water of loans pay off, that one five five will trend upward, correct?
Yes, that, that will help. And then as rates go up, that will help too. Okay, so this is in total, the supplemental request on the next three slides. I do have information as we go through each one of the departments on the supplemental request there. But in looking at the ongoing requests, so there was departments requested almost three hundred and ninety nine thousand, and what is included is two hundred and thirty two thousand. The biggest portion there is a water conservation program. And of that, there's one-time startup costs of a hundred thousand, and the ongoing portion would be a hundred thousand.
Can I ask a question about that? Do, do you have actual estimates from contractors on a water conservation program, or that's just what you think it will cost? And maybe this isn't the time to ask.
We're, we're going to be talking about utilities mostly tomorrow.
Yeah, that estimate is actually based on some work that we did. Brad Hill with Flagstaff actually presented us, and they did a conservation program outreach.
Is your microphone on?
It says on, yeah. So yeah, it's based on an estimate, when we talked to Brad Hill, what they did to start their program up in Flagstaff. So we thought the initial startup, but also develop a, a program document, and then actually help do some of the original layouts for materials and all that, and then we have the ongoing costs.
Okay.
So. And, and that was a successful program, correct?
Yes.
Very successfully.
Yes.
And that, that's probably the cheapest water we're looking at, is this water we don't use.
Right.
Encourage people not to use.
Thanks, Sean. Okay, so the next slide is the one-time supplemental request. And so those range from the high end, so the grant funding that Hal was able to get, the one million, four hundred and forty four thousand. A hundred and twenty thousand of that would need to be covered with the town's money would basically be coming from the general fund, and the rest would be coming from a grant. And all the others are fairly smaller dollar amounts in comparison to that. And in total, they add up to whatever that amount is. Can this move? The box that's in my way. Well, that didn't quite get me there. But so a total of 1.7, I think, is what that number says. But net of the grant revenue leaves us at 400,000. For personnel amounts, so there were requests from departments totaling 875,000. What has been included in the budget is about 396,000, including a procurement manager, a civil engineer and a part-time management analyst. And we will be going through each one of those when we go through the departments. For CIP projects, so we created some definitions for prioritizing CIP projects and provided these to the departments when they're looking at their projects. So the priority one or imperative, so this is essentially those projects that are, can pretty much be considered urgent. The last bullet there says if the project can be delayed, it is most likely not priority one. Priority two is essential that there's definitely some strong needs for doing these. They're just not at the level of it's really urgent and we better take care of it as soon as possible. So dealing with obsolete facilities, goals in the strategic plan, maintaining natural resources, reducing operating and maintenance costs and leveraging restricted funding that has expiration dates on that. The priority three level or important, so these are things that are important to the community, but don't quite rise to the level of imperative or essential. May provide new or expanded level of service, may stimulate economic growth or private capital investment, may promote intergovernmental cooperation, enhance cultural, natural resources are some examples there. And then the last priority is it's desirable, but it just didn't rise to the level of being in the, the first three to four years of our capital improvement plan. So overall, in total, the CIP projects are 17 million. The Cave Creek Water has both the most in number and the most in the dollar amount. 17 projects totaling 10.4 million. That's still a big part of that number is going to be the completion of the Phoenix Interconnect. And then it kind of just goes down from there. Open space, so about 1.6 million in there. Wastewater has nine projects at 1.4, various facilities projects at 1.3, Desert Hills and so forth going, going, they're ranked in the size on this particular slide.
Sherry, a quick question. Could you remind us when the completion of the Phoenix Interconnect is expected?
I think close to the end of fiscal year 26. June of 26. Okay, so I'm going to move into the summaries by fund next. So we'll start off with the, well, start off just talking about the funds. So here's a list of all the funds. The governmental follow one set of accounting rules and the proprietary kind of follow another set of accounting rules when you're looking at gap, but from a budget basis, we treat them all the same. The utility funds are those proprietary or inner enterprise funds. We look at budgets in total and that's very common to look and see where we're at in total. But it's also very important to look at them by fund because there's accountability over each one of these pots of money. For instance, we can't really take wastewater revenues and put it in Cave Creek Water. You have a different set of customers and it's not fair to the wastewater customers who are not on Cave Creek Water to give it to Cave Creek Water or vice versa. There are Cave Creek Water customers who are not on wastewater. So having those separated is important to demonstrate that we are charging the users appropriately based off of the costs of the system. We are distinguishing in the, the budget book here, what is ongoing and what is one-time. For the ongoing is revenues and expenditures that typically happen every year. Some examples that were provided in the budget preparation process for one time. So on the expenditures, capital outlay costs, one-time studies, debt costs were treated as if they were one-time costs. On the revenue side, anything that was like a really significant, like construction related, whether it was like a really significant permit fees or capacity fees that were expected, non-recurring grants, donations, anything that's just out of the ordinary on the revenues. So looking first at the general fund. And so in your book, overall, page four lists the general fund. But here's a summary here, looking at the ongoing resources versus the ongoing costs. So on the ongoing resources side, ongoing revenues of 12,930,000. So the numbers are in thousands. The transfer from Spur Cross, so the half cent that goes in a Spur Cross goes to pay for the costs of associated with maintaining Spur Cross. Then we take 100,000, give it to Trails. And then what's left after that gets split 50-50 between the general fund and the water infrastructure. So we're treating this as an ongoing cost because the costs for Spur Cross just really aren't that significant. So the ongoing transfer is 977,000. So a total of ongoing resources, 13,907. On the right-hand side, so the ongoing costs, so ongoing expenditures, 11,738,000. The Streets Fund, where we have consolidated everything into one place. So for Streets Fund, the ongoing transfer 2.1 million for Streets costs, and that includes all the acceleration of the pavement preservation, road rehab projects. And then the ongoing transfer to the Trails Fund. So the 100,000 from the Spur Cross half cent that goes to Trails is not sufficient to cover all the Trails costs. So that difference in the general fund, 135,000, so a total of 14034. The net ongoing is negative at 127,000. And I would say it's pretty much at break even because revenues, again, are being conservatively estimated. And the expenditures typically, we do not spend all of that. So in the end, the actual numbers would, would probably be more in line of a positive number there instead of a negative.
A couple of things there. Ongoing transfer, has the 50-50 split between general fund and the infrastructure? I mean, does that really mean anything anymore? Should, should we just, is it?
The water infrastructure.
Why wouldn't it all go in general fund, for example?
Well, if, if we did that, so the, the half that goes in the water infrastructure fund, which to me is really, it should just say the Cave Creek Water Fund because that, then we just do a transfer from there into Cave Creek Water. So that's helping to cover costs that if we weren't doing that, then general fund subsidies would need to be more. So we could say it all goes in a general fund and then just increase the subsidy.
That was the same spot, huh?
But yes, it would still end up there.
So you, you, you don't care?
I, I wouldn't say that I don't care. It's really about how council wants to look at it. So if you want to ongoingly say you want to use whatever's left over to help the water fund, great. If you want to say, no, I really want to have that money go to general fund and eventually have the water fund repay the general fund for subsidies, then there's that too.
Well, I'm going to ask council to discuss this then because it, it just seems to me that, that, that we're trying to get out of the subsidy business. And having one built in by a resolution seems to me to not make sense because it doesn't mean, all it does is disguise what's going on. And I, I just assume send it all to the general fund because it's, if, if we're short in the fund, we'll take it out of there anyway. But at least it highlights the fact that, that we've got a deficit that we're covering through some paperwork exchange. So.
There's another side of this, and that is that we're talking about the half cent that was originally put in there for Spur Cross. So this maintains the understanding that that is coming from the Spur Cross. So in a sense, I like this. I like the way we're doing it.
So intertwined with what you're, you're saying, Council of Fire, that would also be a question of mine of, of the Spur Cross. And when we start looking at the numbers for the Spur Cross Fund, we get a significant amount of money in the half cent sales tax compared to what the actual costs are of the program. So we could just say it all goes into general fund. We pay for the 216,000 of Spur Cross maintenance out of general fund and eliminate that fund.
That's what you're calling it. That'd be my preference. I, I mean, having $2 million going to Spur Cross when Spur Cross uses 200,000 just doesn't make any sense to me. And, and we need that for fire, frankly.
I, I think at the time that that was decided to do that, it made sense because it helped retire the debt on this, the acquisition of the conservation area is my understanding with that half-cent sales tax. Wasn't just to pay for it, but we bonded originally for that is my understanding. And we retired that debt sooner.
It wasn't bonded, it was a property assessment.
Well, that, but that's what it is. When, when you have, the property owners were assessed and they were paying for that. So it's true. So you're right. I mean, it wasn't that, but it was debt financed.
One of the reasons why I think you want to keep it is we're going to be putting something to the voters, correct?
That's, that's the recommendation.
If we're going to put something to the voters, we're going to have to have that same kind of, kind of bonding going. So the half-cent sales tax also is a mechanism that could be used in case, correct?
It, it could also be used for possibly the, you know, the times coverage to put something in reserve.
I have no problem with the property assessment. I think that's the way to go.
Right.
For the open space acquisition. I do think we need to tell folks how much it actually is going to cost.
Right.
But I do think it needs to go on the ballot if we're going to do that. But I think the reason that you have this fund there, your bondholders are going to want to know, right? Is there another revenue source that can be tapped into if we don't get enough out of the property assessments? We have some catastrophic event.
So I think it's a good discussion we're having right now. I wanted to let you know too, council, that on May 19th, the Development Services Director will be coming forth with a strategic policy as to how to approach the state trust land acquisition. So that's, that's part of the plan. So I, I don't think we need to decide today what the policy is, but it's good to get some discussion on that and then we can have a, an action at a later date on this, on this issue. So, but it sounds like we might have consensus on making that change right now from what I'm kind of seeing.
I just, $2 million, I mean, we've got open space all over the place and $2 million going into fund that then we transfer to other funds because we can't, I mean, we're balanced now. And you can't take it away from the general fund without going red. So it, it maybe, it's a feel-good issue. It's a virtue signaling, but it's, it's impractical from a financial management standpoint, in my view. I mean, we're, we're going to fund the Spur Cross, we're going to pay the money to the county to operate it. We've, we've got big plans over on the state. I mean, this, but the town needs to survive the same time. That money is needed for all the increases we have generally in the general fund. And the fact that state shared revenues are dropping, as is construction tax, which is a story that we used to fund ongoing operations. So it, it's a fantasy that we can take that money out of there if it's for anything else. But who likes fantasies, right? Okay.
Looking at the general fund reserves and restricted balances. So I am intending to bring a revised policy to council on the reserves. As I mentioned, we currently have a operating reserve and a contingency reserve, which is really redundant. I went back and looked at the TPT revenues, the sales tax revenues. What the peak was prior to the Great Recession compared to what the bottom was in the Great Recession. And that was a 14% drop from the peak to, to the bottom. So I, I'm suggesting a 25% reserve is more than sufficient of what would be needed for something of that nature. And I wasn't here at that particular point in time, but I know that most municipalities, the, where I was at in Sedona as well, a lot of actions were taken to help right the ship within the level of revenues that were occurring well before it became a problem. And in fact, in Sedona, reserves were growing instead of decreasing during that timeframe because they were so conservative. I don't know about here, it might have been, been a similar situation.
So you're, you're basically saying that we have too much reserves, that you're willing to operate with far lower reserves? Is that the, the 25%?
Yeah, 25% would be very common. The Government Finance Officers Association, GFOA recommends at least 15%, so even less.
So what is ours? What percentage is ours currently?
So it's a weird formula. It's not a straightforward formula like that, but it would be somewhat similar. So if you look at, on the overall dashboard, near the bottom in the ending fund balance reserve, so the total reserves in fiscal year 24 was 2.6 million. Budgeted for 25, 2.8 million. And then for fiscal year 26, this 25% puts us at 2.9 million.
But practically speaking, we don't have reserves on the utility fund. So the, the, the general fund is essentially backing the wastewater for sure. And it's also backing because we have not established the reserves for either Desert Hills or Cave Creek. It's just backing those two. So until we get to the point where all those are funded, I think that's too low.
What would you suggest?
Better, a higher number. I don't know.
30%?
Well, there, there are, there are standards that we, that, that Will Dan put into some of the rate calculations. If I can recall, there were two, one is for maintenance and one is for operating. Because you have to have time if, if all of a sudden you're not selling all the water that you have because it's not available. Then you have to have time to put in new rate structures and have enough funds to carry you through that dead zone. And so we, 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 I'd like to see us increase that until we have operating reserves built up in the utility companies.
Okay. So you want it set at a high enough level to kind of serve as the reserves for the utilities without the transfer to the utilities?
Until, just, just as, as a temporary measure until, because you mean, I, I, we need to get started on getting Desert Hills funding itself. We've been working on that for many years. It never seems to, to get there. The wastewater is 10, 15 years out, but Cave Creek Water is just a few years out. So we should be able to do that to, once the, the original bonds pay down.
Okay. And I, and I have in slides coming up, the calculations of reserves of what they could be in the utility funds. We also are starting an equipment replacement reserve in the general fund. This is representing a reserve for IT equipment. So there's 43,000. It represents one year of the useful life allocation of IT equipment. This is not going through and saying, well, we've owned this piece of equipment for two years, so let's do two years of funding. Or we've owned it for three years, let's do three years of funding. This is just strictly what is one year's worth of useful life to get a reserve started. There is a reserve for the Southwest Gas Capital in the agreement with Southwest Gas. Their money needs to be set aside that if Southwest Gas does spend on capital, then we would basically reimburse them for those costs. I don't see in the little bit that I've gone back, that the last few years that we've ever had to do that. And I don't know if there has in the past previous to what I looked at. But as of June 30, we need to have that amount. we need to have that amount sitting there waiting to see if they have capital expenditure. And it's not very much money. It's like eight thousand dollars that would be in that, um, which would basically only be one quarter of what's contributed to that fund. Um, the estimate for the negative cash balance for Desert Hills water would be six hundred twelve thousand. So even though we're not doing a transfer to subsidize the fund, they are negative in the cash pool. So essentially they're borrowing from the general funds cash in order to cover their negative cash. So after these reserves, there's a balance available of ten point six million. So we may take some of that to go towards um, basically setting aside a reserve for the potential of the utility funds. Um, I also have a slide here on maybe we want to put some of that money in capital reserves. Um, I had on here on the list, uh, rate stabilization for utility funds. Um, in the work session a couple of weeks ago, they're really after fiscal year twenty six is only another half million going to Cave Creek water as far as subsidies are concerned. And then that's that's it. That's the last of the subsidy subsidization or uh, the last of any increases in the negative cash for Desert Hills water. So uh, so not a whole lot there. Uh, but there was some fairly substantial rate increases that we were looking at. So if you chose to bring those down, we could use some of it towards that. Uh, you could say you want to put more money towards the uh, vehicle and equipment replacement reserves. And we get through some of the other funds, particularly the capital improvements fund. You'll see we have a substantial amount that we're putting in a reserve there for future fire engines and water tanker and brush truck type stuff. Uh, or there may be other priorities um, that you want to set aside the money for.
Good, so good. Yep.
Looking at the reserve funds for Desert Hills Water loan and and any other utility fund stabilization. Is that based on the rates increasing and the recommended rate that we heard about in the utility rate studies?
So this is uh, based off of the assumption that what you saw, um, that it would be those amounts and that it would be um, as discussed in the work session of basically debt financing as much capital in the utility funds as possible. And so the the balancing part of it of the general fund um, is based off of those assumptions.
Did the you, did the rate study that we saw and this five five hundred thousand dollar uh, subsidy before it stops, did that include all of the funding for the water acquisition projects?
Um, so most of that was debt financed.
The water acquisition was debt financed? We think we can do that?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, okay. So moving on to the next fund, so the grants and other restricted fund. Um, so this fund is fairly easy. It's on page five. Um, in this fund, we have uh, lottery money that we receive from the state that we um, use to go towards Foothills Carrying Core, um, their transportation program, I believe. Um, we have the Prop two oh seven smart and safe funding that has to go towards um, law enforcement uh, costs and the opioid settlement fund monies and then just a contingency for any unknown grants of three million dollars. That's the big piece of what's in there is the three million. All these other amounts are small dollars. On the streets fund, um, on page overall dash six. Um, so this is consolidation of all the streets costs, taking costs from the general fund um, so that everything is here. If you if you look at that page, um, if you're in those pages in your book, for fiscal year twenty four, it was showing an ending fund balance of two hundred twenty eight thousand. So to the state, that looks like, well, we don't need all of our HERF money. We actually need a whole lot more because when you look at what we're transferring in fiscal year twenty six to balance the fund compared to how much HERF dollars and how much expenditures, we're transferring um, two point three million um, in total. So uh, quite a big difference. So that's a big part of why we're doing this, to be able to demonstrate really where we're at um, related to streets.
And how how many years before we catch up on our streets? Until we're at a steady state maintenance level.
We'll know, just getting the results back, my new payment management plan, we're guessing probably about two years, whether it's this year or next year. I is what we know currently, but we'll know better ones with the new.
Okay, so on the next page, the spur cross ranch conservation fund, that's your overall dash seven. Um, so the balance in the fund after the maintenance costs of two hundred sixteen thousand is two point one million. So yes, there's a lot of money coming from this half cent tax that um, is far in excess of what we actually spend on spur cross. And um, so we talked before, a hundred thousand goes to trails and then fifty fifty between general fund and the water infrastructure fund, which is really Cave Creek water, which is nine hundred seventy seven thousand each.
So that goes away in twenty twenty seven? That nine hundred seventy seven to the water, Cave Creek water?
Um, it, or it could be fiscal year twenty six if we want to implement a policy in the twenty six budget.
So I guess we'll talk about it tomorrow, but I was under the understanding when we talked about this last year, as we were doing the budget, that Cave Creek water will pay for itself next year.
So um, fiscal year twenty seven was still um, needing another half million subsidy from general fund. And um,
Well, but we had Will Dan come in and do a rate study. Now, I'm not pinging on you. We had Will Dan come in and do a rate study and the idea was that they were going to eliminate the subsidy beginning in twenty twenty seven. So I understand this year's subsidy, but when twenty twenty seven, we shouldn't be paying into Cave Creek water. I mean, that the mayor was pretty clear on that.
Ye- yes, and um, so during the work session a couple of weeks ago, I talked about how the numbers that were provided to Will Dan overestimated how much revenue that we were getting. And so they based off of a higher level to then say, okay, then we need this much of a rate increase when really revenue was down here. So that rate increase gave you less.
Is that that one and a half million dollars that we're? Okay.
Um, the trails fund, so the hundred thousand from spur cross um, is insufficient to cover all the costs. So it requires an additional transfer from general fund of a hundred and thirty five thousand. So we could say if we're going to roll spur cross into the general fund, eliminate spur cross, then we would just not have this fund either as well.
So trails are getting two hundred and thirty five thousand a year?
Yes.
Well, how are we spending two thirty five on trails? That's.
So um, the last couple of years, it hasn't been quite that much, but I know that there was some plans for something. Oh, Luke just left. He knew you were going to ask.
Strategic.
So we'll we'll be coming back to trails, so you can, you can ask again. Um, so the capital improvements fund, so on overall dash nine. Um, so one of the things that we've done is um, consolidated the tracking of everything. So open space acquisition fund, we're rolling into CIP, we will still track that balance and attribute it. So when you look at the bottom of the page in the ending fund balance section, there is um, a line that says reserve for open space acquisition. So we would still track what that balance is. Um, but just for consolidation of the number of funds that we have, we would roll that all together. So there would be about one point six million and in the fiscal year twenty six budget, we're assuming um, that we would have that placeholder for in case we would be spent. Having that placeholder, the math says if you start with one point six, you spend one point six, your ending is zero. I don't know if we would spend it next year or not. It may still be there um, at the end of the year, just like it was this year as well. I don't know. Um, we also have a transfer of about ten million from the general fund. Um, looking at what was in the fiscal year twenty five budget for capital reserves, less estimated expenditures. Also looking at um, what was considered capital in the past for roads that is really um, pavement preservation, road rehab and accounting for those um, in the adjustment. So um, so that we're transferring ten million there. Uh, we do have a suggestion uh, for a policy that in the general fund, um, the construction sales tax, uh, what a lot of places do is as a funding source for the capital improvements because we consider it one time revenue. Um, putting fifty percent, some places even do a hundred percent. Um, and putting that money in the capital improvements fund each year. So for fiscal year twenty six, if we did fifty percent, that would be eight hundred sixty two thousand. Um, the total amount in the general fund is one point seven million. So that's one half of that one point seven.
Where's the other half go?
Stays in general fund.
Right now, a hundred percent of it's going to the general fund. So I think this is a really good practice. I mean, it's significant improvement. If we have a downturn in the economy and we're not getting the construction sales tax, then obviously on the general fund side, we have to adjust our expenditures. Um, so.
Counsel disagree with that?
No.
Oops, there you went. Ask that question one. Luke just got.
Trails.
Oh, what was it?
On trails.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll be spending two hundred thirty five thousand dollars on trails about. Welcome back.
Is that just what's budgeted in the in the fund?
Yes.
Correct. So the trails fund, we get a hundred thousand each year. Uh, we let that account build up so that economies of scale, we can do uh, more projects, whether it's, you know, a mile through the town core or a half mile, that kind of thing. Because a lot of times forty, fifty thousand doesn't do the stamped asphalt that we did in front of. Uh, what's the the Black Mountain Feed as an example, like the, just if we spent a hundred thousand each year, that doesn't go as far. So we let that account build up over time so that we can do bigger projects and um, do those improvements. And then the other, then the remaining is just ongoing maintenance of our trails.
I thought there was a transfer from general fund.
Ye- yes, so the hu- the hundred thousand coming from spur cross. So we're saying we would set up the trails fund to account for that hundred thousand. But based off of what's budgeted for the fund, it's two hundred thirty five thousand total that a hundred thirty five thousand would have to come from general fund to help fund, to cover that. So if you wanted to have the trails fund um, and accumulate money there so that you could um, function in a a manner that Luke is talking about, where you could accumulate a reserves for when there's a bigger project, then you could have that available. So a- at this point, we did go back and look at history to see of the hundred thousand each year that was being transferred to the general fund and not really being tracked. But we went back to look and identify what trails costs were. And there was, there was not extra money available um, to transfer as a beginning balance into the trails fund.
So a hundred thousand is pretty much covering?
No, it it was not enough to cover the costs.
Well, so there's nothing identified? I mean, you have general spending of two hundred thirty five thousand for trails?
We bring every trails project to council. Yeah, so.
But you don't have identified projects to spend there, do you?
We do offhand. I don't know. I I mean, I can't tell you exactly what those are offhand, uh, but there are just different projects. Basin Road, I know is one. Trying to think what else. I know Basin Road is a is a big project from Cave Creek Road to um, to skyline, essentially to the museum. Um, and there are some others in the town core, just some infill projects in the town core. Correct. Yeah, there's um, the the various easements and alternatives for the Morning Star Trail.
So if we did the Morning Star Trail, that's where the money would come from?
Right. Correct. And that would come back to council also as well.
Um, so the reserve balances that we have in the capital improvements fund, so this equipment uh, replacement reserve of um, almost eight hundred and thirty thousand. So again, this is based off of one year of useful life allocation of existing vehicles and heavy equipment. But it also includes replacement of the um, fire engines. The water tanker and the brush truck um, all would be due in about ten years for both station one and the regional station one forty four. So um, that's a pretty significant amount that we're um, budgeting to accumulate one tenth of that each year so that we would have the funding available in year ten. And um, in talking with Jim Ford, um, it's eight to ten years. Uh, he says ten years is a really good estimate to go with for the useful life.
We've uh, done future value anticipating, you know, cost escalation, so it's not just one tenth of today's cost.
Correct. Um, and then the remaining balance in the fund, six point eight million. So of the capital reserve needs in the five year CIP plan, that covers eighty percent of what those amounts are. And we'll be going through all of those costs a little bit later. So uh, the wastewater fund, so looking at ongoing um, resources versus costs. So the ongoing revenues at um, three million five hundred seventy five thousand compared to ongoing expenditures, two million one oh three. So from an ongoing perspective, it looks good, one million four hundred and seventy two thousand. But when we look at covering debt service, um, it exceeds that amount. Um, and so the net after debt service is a negative four hundred twenty three thousand. So we're not covering all the debt service and we're not covering any of the CIP costs with our um, charges for services. So it requires about a million of debt financing and a transfer from the general fund of of six hundred ninety eight thousand to help cover those additional costs. Looking at the reserve, so we did set up an equipment replacement reserve, um, twenty nine thousand. Again, it represents one year of useful life. Um, the operating reserve, we have not set one up. If um, we want to set up an operating reserve, typical in the utility funds would be three months. That represents five hundred twenty six thousand for wastewater and would require additional general fund subsidy. Or what the mayor was suggesting is we could set it aside in the general fund and just not transfer it over.
Well, yeah, I mean, what, uh, until, I this is, this is that one of those timing issues with the with the bonds expiring. Uh, I mean, why do it now? When you're just going to take it away in a year or two as these bonds start to go. So I I think we ought to fund those when we, when these uh, when the original bonds that we've been covering for years expire, then we'll have room to to fund these and other things too.
Sure.
Yeah.
Um, Cave Creek Water Fund, um, so looking at the ongoing, so ongoing revenues, six million two hundred eighty five thousand compared to ongoing expenditures, four million five hundred eighty four thousand. So we have a positive one million seven hundred one thousand. But debt service is two million six hundred forty seven, so we have a negative there of nine hundred forty six. So um, the the revenues coming in to Cave Creek water insufficient to cover debt service and CIP. It would require seven point one million of additional debt financing based off of what's budgeted, plus the nine hundred seventy seven thousand transfer from spur cross fund, plus seven hundred thirty one thousand transfer from general fund in order to help cover um, the CIP and debt service costs.
So we're looking at, we're looking at a, what, a one point eight million dollar subsidy every year? Or one point six million, one point seven roughly, the nine seventy seven plus the seven thirty one?
Yeah, if you could, if you take both of those, yes, that one point seven.
Well, can can we, I mean, can we increase the debt funding and uh, reduce those other two numbers, nine seventy seven and seven thirty one, or they are they?
That's seven point one million of debt financing is everything that could potentially be debt financed.
So, okay, so these are, yeah. Well, we got to take a close look at what we're going to do with uh, with those uh, rates.
Um, with the Cave Creek Water Fund reserves, so um, a small amount, fifty nine thousand for equipment replacement reserve. The debt service reserve, one point three million. So um, one of the things that WIPA is asking us to do is to demonstrate that we would be able to continue at one and a half times coverage based off of um, the the WIPA finance directors kind of back of the napkin type calculations. He's saying, well, you're not going to stay at the one point five times coverage based off the track that you're on. And I told him, well, we're in the midst of a rate study that is particularly looking at addressing some of these types of things. So at this point in time, um, we need to be able to demonstrate that to him before he would be willing to take it to the board um, to have the debt service reserve released. at this point in time, we need to be able to demonstrate that to him before he would be willing to take it to the board to have the debt service reserve released. Operating reserve, so nothing right now, three months operating expenditures would be about one point one million. And again, if we wanted to do that now, if we want to wait, but Cave Creek Water wouldn't be completely out of debt for a long time because of the Phoenix Interconnect, but it would kind of be a bit of a cliff of debt dropping off well before then.
This is another one of those timing issues, the right time to fund those reserve funds is after the debt payments are done originally.
Yes. Okay, so on Desert Hills, so this one's a little bit different. Ongoing revenue, four million oh sixty one, ongoing expenditures, three million oh twelve, the net ongoing, one million forty nine, debt service is less than that at one million ten. So there's a positive number after debt service of thirty nine thousand. But in order to cover CIP, it would require one point one million of debt financing, plus the cumulative cash loan from the general fund of six hundred and twelve thousand to be able to, to cover the fund where it's at. Looking at the reserves for Desert Hills Water, so a small amount, five thousand for equipment replacement reserve. The debt service reserve, four hundred sixty seven thousand, again, we need to demonstrate future one and a half times coverage. This one was at a better point, it was about two and a half times in fiscal year twenty four, so this one would be a little bit easier to cover and, and have the reserve released. The operating reserve, nothing right now, three months operating expenditures would be seven hundred and fifty three thousand. Anything from the overall big picture before we start jumping into departments? So going in the order of what's in your books, so town council, so here's a summary of the changes, so the fiscal year twenty five budget of thirty five thousand nine hundred going to a total budget of a hundred nineteen thousand four hundred, percentage change, two hundred and thirty three thousand. I was asked to put a placeholder in for council discretionary spending of seventy five thousand. We also increased the training and travel line item to to add eighty five hundred to assume that all the council members would attend the annual league conference, just to make sure that that capacity is available in case everyone chose to do so.
Could you clarify the professional services? What are we looking at?
So the, the mayor had asked that I include some money there for discretionary spending of the council.
It's at the council discretion, it wouldn't be spent unless the council voted.
So when we have those special, we, we wanna take a, a hard look at this. We have the money that we could hire the contractors to look at something.
It's not like for leadership training for individuals. It's for actual hiring.
No, that, that's not. That's not my understanding.
I thought with the discussion that we'd had, it was for hiring consultants, but or whatever we needed to do.
There, there's a number of uses, that might be more.
Okay, very good.
So next department administration, so administration includes the town manager's office, the town clerk's office, administrative services, which within administrative services is HR, IT, risk management, and then communications and public affairs, so there's a lot going on in administration. The fiscal year twenty five budget, about one point six million going in fiscal year twenty six to one point nine, twenty three percent increase. Personnel costs going up two hundred and fifty five thousand. Definitely seeing some increase in our technology costs, so those are going up fifty five thousand. In the fiscal year twenty five budget was contemplated purchasing copiers. And really the norm today is really to lease copiers, then you get new technology and, and faster working machines when you turn them over. So including lease costs for the copiers of fourteen thousand. There really wasn't much as far as a communications program, and Bo has been doing a bang up job on communications and prospector newsletter and all the various things, so adding budget money there for that. Adding townwide training programs, and then just miscellaneous, net miscellaneous changes. We did look at staffing. The mayor generously shared with us some calculations on looking at staffing and how we compare to other agencies, we looked at municipalities, Maricopa County ones that had populations less than forty thousand, and ones that had detailed budgeted FTEs available. There were plenty where we couldn't look at the, the detail, so it was, it was limited to that. We looked at in pretty extensive depth when we did ours of what are some of the operational differences, so we contract out for public safety, both police and fire, so we didn't want to include those counts in the numbers. We don't operate our own court, so we didn't want to include that. Many of the municipalities we were trying to compare to do not have their own utilities, so we didn't want to include those in. We don't have a town, library, parks and recreation, housing program, social services, we don't have a cemetery, don't have an airport, so there's a variety of things that we were backing out. And then we looked at what was remaining in the comparisons per one thousand in population. And so here's the list in rank order of that last column of the per one thousand population with Tolleson up at the top end and El Mirage at the bottom end. So we looked at leaving those outliers out, Tolleson and El Mirage, and the average without those outliers was five point four two positions per one thousand. And we are below what that average is with the outliers at four point eight five. If we wanted to just be average, then it would be if we had two point nine four more bodies, and how do we get a point nine four body, I don't know, but so essentially three people would put us at the average based off of all of these organizations.
King Solomon had a way of dealing with that.
So one of the things that we're feeling a little bit of pain on, so here on the administrative supplemental request, so in your books is the form that was completed for the request for a procurement manager. With procurement, it is something that a procurement profes- professional knows an awful lot of detail, I know a lot about procurement. I've even had to audit procurement practices and things, but when I was working with a procurement professional, when we hired one in Sedona, it made a huge difference, and there was a lot of things like oh wow, that was like really great to know. And we were having a lot of issues, for instance, one of the departments was, I'll just tell you, it was the wastewater department had a cleaning service for their uniforms, because most people don't want to put their uniforms in their home washer and dryer, and
Law, by the way. That's a law. You cannot, you have to, you have to service uniforms if you require it.
Yeah, yes, exactly, and so the state had changed who they were contracting with and had better pricing, and so notified the wastewater director of like, oh hey, just so you know, this is what the state was doing, and so so the director ended up proceeding saying, okay, yes, I want to change who we're using to who the state contract is. And no one was aware that there was even a contract in place with the existing provider. Nobody could even find a copy of the contract, actually had to ask the vendor for a copy of the contract, which had penalty clauses for canceling the contract. So there's a lot of things that a procurement manager who's managing, they, they manage your contracts, they help make sure that a lot of compliance things are dealt with, they help with RFPs and help make sure that things like scope and all of that is really well defined, so it really is something that's very beneficial, and I don't know if you have anything else you wanted to add to that, Grady?
Yeah, um, having worked in my previous job, all the directors, just like here, are very active in procurement. And it takes away a lot of their time and effort on doing their regular jobs to do it. It's not to say that they wouldn't be involved in developing scope and, and being involved in helping to maybe rank RFQs that might come through. But I do think that the amount of time that we've got, when you think about the high dollar department directors doing this kind of work versus somebody that's a professional and is much more efficient and effective in doing it, I do think it frees up additional time on the part of the directors to do their jobs and, and there's also in conjunction with this web-based software that's out there that actually helps, instead of just a one-person show, it, it actually is almost like a two and a half. Because a lot of the software does, a lot of the automates the RFPs and the rankings and the solicitations that go out. So I, I highly recommend this, just having experienced the effectiveness of having a job like this. So I, I think it would be good for the organization.
Would the efficiencies that created by having the procurement director or manager alleviate staffing needs in any of the other departments, would it increase efficiencies to the point that other positions could be closed or moved?
Um, I think what it would do is not so much that, because I, I think we're already very very lean, yeah, thank you. But I, but I do think that these positions are able to go after the, the deals that are out there. They're familiar with the different state contracts, the different cooperative purchasing agreements that are out there, and, and we've done that, don't get me wrong, we've done that before. But I do think that these positions are typically a big chunk of it's paid for by the savings that they bring back to the organization, so I believe there's an offset. Certainly in the way of efficiencies and keeping us legal, I mean, that's a big part of this, ensuring that we're not causing an issue inadvertently, now our, we're very fortunate because Mr. Sims, our, our town attorney, looks at every solicitation that goes out. But I can tell you, having worked with a procurement position like this that's on top of things, it saves the work and the billing hours that an attorney has to be, you know, charged us for, so if you've got somebody that's doing their job and a knockout job, it's saving your legal costs as well.
Her attorney looks at every procurement? That's out of this world.
Well, the attorney, it's not unusual, actually, at the municipal level, it's not unusual at all.
You buy, you buy something?
No, I'm talking about things that are like RFPs, doing RFPs, RFQs. A lot of times the laws change on that, so, but we do go with a standard boilerplate that Bill has helped us develop so that we don't, so he just peruses that, but it still takes his time to do this. So.
Saying you're right there, I cannot imagine having to use an attorney to review things like that.
Not, not the minor.
I am negative on this one, I don't can we afford it? I have to be convinced that it is coming out of the general fund and we have the money to do that without pulling general fund. It's, this is the ongoing versus reserves issue.
I don't, I don't believe we're pulling any reserves from this proposed.
But this is, this is forever, I mean, this is another position that we're gonna be paying pensions on, and it goes on and on and on, so I mean, th- this is a big decision. I, what I'd like to see is a, is a listing of, of what approved positions we have now and have that approved along with the with the budget. And then let you divide up who, how many people go here and there, because that's I don't think we need to get into every little, every position, but the total overall, those are pension costs, and we want to make sure, I mean, our revenues are going up two percent a year. And in order for me to buy onto a lifetime of ongoing expenses, it has to be more than just we think we'll make money on it, it's, it's.
So just so you know, in the information that was provided to Jim Rounds, it included what we anticipated would be coming forward to you as recommendations to include the budget, so it was in there.
And, and that, but that was going downhill like a, like a avalanche.
So in the, in the one scenario where he was saying, what does it take to break everything at the four point eight percent, yes. But at the three percent, no.
It's gonna take some discussion to get this including some real numbers, how much, number one is, what's the performance measurement? Number two is, how much do we expect him or her to, to go through that office every year? So we make sure we have, there is enough there for a full-time position. Those are two things I want to see.
From my perspective, though, it adds credibility and accountability to all of the expenditures that we make on a fifty million dollar budget, whether or not we spend all that. But we have some major purchases, including, you know, most recently, the Phoenix Interconnect. And, you know, this helps us ensure that we're getting the best, I hate this expression, bang for our buck, that we get the best deals for everything that we need to buy. Right now, we have staff doing it, who may not be the best judge or have the time to do all the comparisons. So from my perspective, it's a benefit to the organization and to this community that we have an expert doing all of our purchasing.
I want to back that up, there's a skill set that's involved here in procurement, it's not something that I would see that the other managers would have necessarily that skill set.
We, we definitely need somebody to keep everybody organized, so each little department's not doing their own thing, one person works with them, keeps it organized, and it's gonna work a lot better, and these guys will be able to focus on what they have to do instead of going out and looking for people and bids and things, I've heard since I've been up here, how many bids have you had? How many, you know, this and that, we, we need a person that's a pro that knows how to get the best bang for their buck.
I like the idea of a procurement specialist, but my question is, who's doing that now? And is there enough to offset by losing a person?
They're doing it individually, all the different staff people.
Every, every department that has expenditures that has to, you know, go off and do an RFP or an RFQ. They're doing it individually, and it's taken quite a bit of their time to, to do this and
If there's, how many man-hours are they currently occupying, and what are they gonna do? What are they gonna do instead of what, spending their time on that?
Well, as you know, we're, we're very flat in the organization, so we don't have a lot of other people down below that can be delegated additional responsibility. The mayor brought up a good point, we will come back before ultimately decisions made on this, that has some performance related excuse me, performance related areas for your consideration, and also amount of time that I'm hearing, people are curious about the, the amount of time that we spend on procurement and also what we think savings might result from this position, so.
I want to make crystal clear, I'm not against procurement.
I understand.
But this is a one-time marginal thing, we ought to be optimizing the rest of the organization with what we do too. We only have so much money, it's going down. The, I mean, we lost a billion and a half, we thought, in utilities. We got water to buy, we've got in the general fund, we're losing shared revenues. Our, our revenue went up by two tenths, two percent here, and our spending is going up by four. And yeah, I'd like to have everything, but we ought to be optimizing the whole organization, and if a procurement person is right, well, maybe we can find another spot to take someone away, because if there's gonna be efficiency, then we need to find a way to pay that out.
I don't understand what you mean when you say it's a one-time thing. We procure every year.
No, it, this analysis, this analysis, one time, it's not taking the whole organization into account, it's just the one person on the margin as opposed to the other forty nine people, are we optimizing all the work in town? To do this?
And I think what I'm hearing too is that there, is there a position within the current authorized listing of, of employees that might be able to take this on or be reassigned or something, is that what I think I'm hearing you say? So we'll take a look, I.
Someone look at the other efficiencies in the organization to see where we're overstabbed. I mean, building is going down, okay, the number of construction sales taxes dropping. For example, so we have some things in the general funds are going down.
Let me ask a question real quick. If we brought a procurement person on and they were part-time, would we have to pay them a pension? Let me ask a question real quick. If we brought a procurement person on and they were part-time, would we have to pay them a pension?
If it's 20 hours or more, yes.
Okay. We could always go with somebody that's less than 20 hours, 15 hours. I mean, I don't think you need a full-time procurement officer in a little town of 5,000. Phoenix obviously probably has two or three of these people, but we're not Phoenix.
They have a whole department.
Yeah.
They have a lot more than two or three.
Yeah.
Again, I still think that it's a security thing for this organization to have somebody who knows what they're doing, who's buying our big ticket items. I don't know why anybody thinks that, you know, our staff could do it all when we're looking to purchase a $150,000 vehicle, for instance. I just, I think it's a smart strategic move for this organization, for the community. And it doesn't really, it's not based on how many people live in this town. It's based on our budget and what our needs are.
Okay.
Yeah. And the analysis we did on the staffing levels, so compared to average, we're short three positions. And this is by far one that we think would be. Module. So that's on page A-11 in your books. So this was requesting a module that helps to attract people as part of our recruitment process to apply for our positions. So if you're familiar with things like Indeed, they have things to kind of help market and try and get people to apply for your positions. This was not recommended by the town manager, and so it is not included in the budget. The next supplemental package, the four ruggedized laptops, vehicle mounts, printers, that starts on page A-12. So this was one-time cost of 18,000 for those. That is recommended. That is for these more heavy-duty laptops to be used out in the field by inspectors.
So if we're going to buy them as a one-time cost, there's also going to be a recurring cost because we're going to have to get replaced, correct?
Correct.
Correct. And we have, for the first time, put together what we call a, an IT replacement fund starting next year. First time we've ever had that.
I expect this would go along with the upgrades that we've got in the water meters and would allow the people to work in their cars and use that, those upgrades more efficiently.
Um, yeah. So this was more geared towards the inspectors, building inspectors. Earth cam on page A-14. So this was not recommended by the town manager. It is basically having cameras. So people on the internet can look and see what's happening in our town and create some buzz about Cave Creek.
We've got lots of others.
The community survey. So this again was not recommended, 15,000 for that. This is something that a lot of municipalities do these surveys to kind of see what the community thinks of what are we doing well, what are we not doing well? But it was not recommended at this time. And then, uh, community meetings. So $2,000 was recommended to be included to help provide funding to be able to do those community meetings. And then the page that was on your, on the dais, the social media outsourcing can just insert that in the back of your administration section. So the request was for 30,000. The town manager is recommending this not as, as ongoing, but as a one-time 15,000 and then evaluate how well it works before proceeding further.
What's going to be your evaluation criteria? It's 15,000 bucks, it's 30,000. But, I mean, we need to evaluate to make sure it's working. I mean, what?
Well, we're going to be, we're, we're going to be using our strategic plan, which calls for this type of citizen engagement and, and this is part of that. But did you want to come up and speak on this?
By the way, I probably should.
Mayor and council, as we do with all of our social medias, just watch the numbers go up. Making sure that we're getting further reach, that we're getting more engagement, more, you know, from the likes to the comments to, you know, making sure that we're raising that, that bar of awareness. And this is, uh, we've had this program for, I think, a couple of years. It was in my budget when we started. And so the 30,000 was a little expansion of that to possibly include some advertising boosts or so with the social media as needed for, if we wanted to promote more events or activities going on in the town. So the 15,000 is less than what we're currently at. And we're going to look at the, to see, you know, is, is it worth having an outside resource? Continue to do this on top of the social media that I've been doing as well.
In fact, I don't know if a professional firm would do it for 15,000. I was in the meeting where we hired. What's, what's the name? E something?
E squared.
E squared, yes. And she cringed at, you know, what we had in our budget for them, which we scraped together. So we'll be lucky if we could hire anybody for that kind of money.
Are we going to bring up advertising, what they advertise? I, I think I was talking to Bo this morning. I think we have a $50,000 advertising budget. And it went over from Luke to Bo, who's now controlling it. Are we going to talk about that at any point in this presentation?
Um, so there was a moving over from Luke to Bo to basically back to Luke, but really back to Tourism Bureau. And so we do have a section on Tourism Bureau.
So we will talk about that. Good. Thank you.
So, um, so the requests totaled 229,000 of those, the recommended 192,000. Are, is there any further discussion on any of these items?
Are, are we going to just continue going? Or are we going to, we're not, we're not very far along.
So, um, mayor, um, council, we're anticipating getting through the general fund. And then we'll likely end, and we'll come back tomorrow and do the utilities. We weren't planning on doing everything today.
Okay. So next is general government. So going from a fiscal year 25 budget of 324,000 to fiscal year 26 proposed 400,000. One of the things that we included in here was a placeholder for miscellaneous consulting services. At least since I've been here, there's a lot of things that have been happening. That special projects that weren't budgeted for fiscal year 25 that will end up saying, okay, we're going to need transfers from contingency or somewhere else to cover. So we wanted to have a placeholder. One of the things we did in looking at the budget was seeing what we could align based off of what the actual program costs were. And so general office supplies are being recorded in the town clerk budget, which when you look at town clerk budget, that's not necessarily a cost of that particular program. And so we ended up moving that over to general government and then some miscellaneous changes there. So that's general government. There are two supplementals that we put under general government. One is for the Cave Creek 40th anniversary of 40,000 of one-time costs recommended and Spur Cross 25th anniversary with one-time cost of 15,000 recommended. Is there a way that we could combine those two events? Because I think I saw that the 40th anniversary is planned to be held out at Spur Cross.
Um, I'm not aware of that. The, the 25th is going to be January for Spur Cross. And then I believe it's the end of June or the first part of July for the 40th anniversary. What we're thinking to keep, keep the costs down, we're trying to use that as our theme for both of them. Like for instance, if we get the, we can get the paving done next year. You know, we will have that tie into the 25th anniversary. Also, I've talked to the Maricopa County Parks Department, and they've got some ideas on what we can do with them on this. They're going through their master plan process for this region of, of their parks, including Cave Creek Regional Park. And so we thought maybe we can do some improvements there. We also have a bathroom that's planned. I know it seems kind of silly to to have a bathroom, be part of a 25th anniversary, but if it's completed sometime next year, that's a kind of a big deal because there really isn't something more permanent out there. And then we just have a lot of like, for instance, the parade that we have planned. That will be 40th anniversary for the town. So there's a lot of things that we're going to do. Our budget book, we'll have the 40th anniversary, everything we can do to kind of keep the costs down. And we're thinking of having, what did we come up with? Was like 12, 12 months of events, which is really not events, just activities going on, just, eh, just recognition of, of, and maybe just a couple of major events that we do in celebration.
I was wrong. It's the Spur Cross event that would be held at Spur Cross.
Yes, absolutely.
It, it kind of sounds like what Carefree did this past year, or actually this current year.
Yeah, they did a lot of infrastructure related to their anniversary.
Right. And a lot of different events.
Right.
Just this morning, I was out at Jewel of the Creek and I saw a good deal of evidence for a need for bathroom facility out there.
Speaking from experience.
Okay, let's move on.
So, so 2026 is the 250th anniversary of the United States. Are we going to tie into that somehow with all this?
So as you know, the council did the proclamation for the America of the Beautiful event. And so I do think that there will be some either cleanup event or sprucing up, like maybe in our medians, doing some some events. Maybe we can do something with banners to put in, you know, for our 40th anniversary on the medians. So there's a lot of different things. And Bo and Teresa and a team of people have come up together with some ideas that we'll be bringing back to council for your blessing. And then any other suggestions that council has.
One last suggestion. There's always a possibility of sponsorships.
Absolutely.
From my perspective, 40th anniversary is pretty close to 50. And I'd rather see a more muted 40th anniversary, save the money for a bigger 50th, maybe something that would tie into a new town hall. That, that type of thing. And to really take this opportunity to celebrate Spur Cross, because it ties in so much with what's important to residents. And to highlight that as the bigger deal this year.
I, I would happen to agree with you. In fact, I tend to think that your, you know, 5, 10, 25, 50 are the big anniversaries. I mean, at least it is with, you know, marriage. And a lot of us, a lot of us would say, yeah, 40th is kind of like a, a non-event kind of a thing. So I would agree. And if the council would rather not do, you know, spend the full amount that's recommended, we would be happy to reduce that because I think we could do a lot of themes tied around that in a lot of different ways as suggested. So we're already spending a lot of money over a million dollars for a road that will really significantly improve access to Spur Cross.
So you might want to use a little bit of that money for, you know, Spur Cross 2, which would be the, you know, the the open land that we're looking at procuring.
It's a good point.
I like that idea. I think that.
Yeah, I think that's well taken.
I don't, I haven't talked to anybody who said we shouldn't get that open land. So I just think maybe we do it as, instead of, you know, have a minor celebration for the 40th, but, you know, just say, hey, look, we have the opportunity or to significantly expand Spur Cross, double the size.
There you go.
You know, and I think that would be, you know, maybe 10,000 or 15,000, you know, to, to advertise something like that. It's going to, it's going to have to go on the ballot anyways. So, I mean, it just seems like a smart way of, of doing it.
As far as next year's parade is concerned, again, it's the 250th year of the United States. Why wouldn't we have a big parade and make it a big deal?
So what's the decision?
Well, I, it sounds like we have three different ideas going on. Um, I think the consensus is, is to reduce the 40,000. So maybe we reduce it down to half that. Is that something you guys would go along with? And then Spur Cross, I think there might be some money, as was mentioned, that we can use for like Councilman Rhodes mentioned. And then we also, are you suggesting, so I'm understanding the 1.5 or the 1.6 million using that for the Spur Cross or, or using a choir?
No, we're talking about putting the acquisition of the land on the ballot, correct?
Yes.
The 4,000 acres. Call it Spur Cross 2. Or Spur Cross second phase. It doubles the size of our open space.
Well, I, I don't like, there's just not. It's a location issue.
It's misleading.
We're going to have to put it, we're going to have to put it somewhere. It's either going to go to Cave Creek Regional Park or to Spur Cross. It's not going to stay as little open pockets. Somebody's going to have to manage that land. So.
So I, I think this is good to have this discussion. But again, um, next month, we'll actually bring the, the whole strategy on state trust land. And I think these are good ideas I'm hearing tonight, that we should maybe incorporate that in that discussion.
Uh, yeah.
I, I want to dovetail on what councilperson Driscoll said. You know, lots, lots of communities have a 40th anniversary, although 40 isn't as great as, as 50, but Spur Cross is just such a defining issue for this community, as is open space. I think that's, that is really special for this community.
I don't even think we need 20,000 for the 40th anniversary.
Agreed. Okay. Yeah. You want 10 grand?
10 grand. Sounds good to me.
Okay.
Can we get any money, any money from the state because of the 250th?
The state, I'm sure is doing.
They're, they're doing their own event.
And, and the Spur Cross needs to be done in conjunction with the county, maybe even the state, because that was, and, and the land trust, all of those.
Right.
Have been, those partnerships have been dynamite.
So I had a meeting with the director a couple of weeks ago and, and reminded her of the 25th anniversary. So it is on her radar and she was going to talk to her staff to see what ideas they have as well. So I think there needs to be collaboration between us and the county on this, since they're partners on that. Well, we, we've got some good directions, so we'll go ahead and make modifications based on what we heard. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to legal services. This one is very simple. No changes, staying at 350,000.
Have we ever used?
Well, I was just going to say that. We didn't even come close to spending that. Right. So, um, the amount for the ongoing portion, 200,000 has placeholder included, just in case something were to happen that we needed to hire additional legal experts for anything. And then in the one-time portion, there's 150,000 for just in case there's some sort of settlement at some point. So it's just placeholders mostly.
Do, do all legal fees go in here, including all of our lawyers, like Michelle? Is she in this?
Those get charged to the utility funds.
Right.
Okay.
I think this is prudent because there are occasions, if, if you were to lose a case while we are defended with our Arizona risk retention pool. Sometimes you have the deductibles. Sometimes you have outside legal counsel where they say, oh, this is a development-related matter and our policy has severe restrictions for that. So I think it's good just to be, we won't, likely won't spend it, but it's just good to have it there, just in case. So we have the expenditure authority to spend it. It's, it's not going to be touched unless we need to, but the, a big chunk of that will be for our town attorney.
Okay. The next one for the court. So going from a budget of 203,000 to a 211, it's an inflationary increase that is in the IGA of 8,000 or 4%. Okay. So moving on to finance. So budget of 685,000 for 2025, fiscal year 26 proposed 969. So this is one of those things where it talked about, instead of doing direct allocation to the utility funds, we're doing indirect cost allocation. So it means taking the utility billing staff, moving them out of the utilities budget, putting them in finance staff, because they are part of finance and report to me. And utilizing the. and utilizing the indirect cost allocations for that and other costs within the finance department that are not being captured. One of the things that has been requested of the finance department is to look at some reorganization and to take on some other duties, which this, these staff members would participate in and not strictly be utility billing staff, which is one of the things in the request for going to Wells Fargo for our banking services and some of the services that they can provide that would help make us more efficient to be able to take on those extra duties.
Would any of those staff members be able to do the work of a procurement officer?
No.
No, just asking.
No, they, they wouldn't have any experience in that. And as I said, I mean, I've done some auditing and stuff, but honestly, I'm very stretched then. There's just no way. The increase in banking fees, so as part of the banking services with Wells Fargo, one of the things that we had recommended was utilizing a sweep account, which invests our monies at a much higher rate. And you can have what they call a peg amount, where you keep a certain amount in your checking account so that you don't incur the banking fees, but you earn a much, much lower rate, which it's really, it's kind of an optics thing why some people go that route. But we earn a lot more money having our money in the sweep and paying the fees and the net impact is significantly higher. So this is the expenditure side of all of that, of the fees while fully utilizing the sweep. And then also part of what we talked about was part of the efficiencies is encouraging people to use credit cards. The way we have our process set up now is actually a discouragement to using credit cards because we add on another fee when you incorporate it into the cost of business and build it into your rates. People don't see it as an inconvenience to use their credit card. Okay, moving on to law enforcement. So going from a budget of 1.4 million, 16,000 to 1,435,000. So just like 1% increase, increase in personnel costs of about 14,000. And one of the things that we were shifting around is animal control was under the town clerk, which is from a programmatic aspect is not really part of town clerk.
She's an animal person.
Yeah. So from a, what is, what do our programs cost? It seemed to fit better with law enforcement. One of the things also with the PSPRS, so I'm guessing there's been conversations in the past about the unfunded liability with PSPRS. As of last year, the amounts were June 30, 2023. The estimated liabilities were 941,000, assets of 730 with an unfunded liability of 211,000. As of June 30, 2024, which is the most recent actuarial evaluation. So that unfunded liability increased just slightly. This is prior to what the current fiscal year budgeted of putting 75,000 to help pay down the liability. The fiscal year 2005 report, the June 30, 2025 report, we won't get that report until November, December of this year. So we won't see the impacts of that 75,000. What we have built into the budget is assuming another 75,000 to help pay that down. And if you assume that, that the net of all the fees and the earnings on the account and the, any additional liability were about equal, then the, with the 75,000 paid in '25 and another in '26, it would leave about 68,000 left of the unfunded liability. Now, there's always tweaks in the way that the actuaries do their calculations every year. So it may not necessarily be exactly that, but should be somewhat close. So we should be caught up in another year after this.
Took me a while to figure out what WIFIL was. What's PSPRS?
Public Safety Personnel Retirement System. So that's the retirement system for police and fire.
Thank you.
There is a supplemental request under law enforcement for a speed awareness radar trailer for a cost of 23,000. This is recommended. But one of the things that the town manager has asked is to look into possibilities of grant funding. So if grant funding can be obtained, we would do that. Otherwise, it would just be utilizing general fund resources.
See, we have two now? Three? Do we need four?
Mayor Council, when we're talking about operational efficiencies, three units are 2004 year, model years. So they're breaking constantly and we're replacing parts constantly and currently they're waiting for parts in the back. So efficiency wise.
So you're going to get rid of some and this is replacement?
One for one. In the next few years we'll continue. Unfortunately, we're deploying it very often.
We, we think that there might be through the governor's office of highway safety. These are types of things that they like and because it's the one-time type of funding grant. So we think that there's going to be funding available that they get from the feds.
Okay, so the next is special events. There are no changes in total with the budget. However, I do have a note here. So it was being divided up into multiple divisions, which didn't seem worth the effort because they're such small dollar amounts. So we are recommending just consolidating it as one division.
Who, who would oversee that fund then?
Actually, Marshall Stein is the one who oversees this budget.
And what type of events are in that?
The parade, the public safety costs and street costs related to the closures.
Got it.
Question, a permit for Bike Week right now? What is it, 150 for them to do that event?
Yeah, and then they have also applied for a liquor license.
Okay.
Okay, so next up is the fire emergency protection. So fiscal year 25 budget of 3.1 going to fiscal year 26 budget of almost 5.5 million. The personnel costs, small amount, 18,000. The regional station, 144, the ongoing costs, 1,473,000. So that is with the station planning on coming online. And there are a lot of those costs that we would have to start paying for come July 1, when they hire the employees. There are the one-time costs of 781,000. That would be like the academy costs, which are very, very expensive per person and turnout gear and all sorts of those. Jim Ford unfortunately couldn't be here tonight, but he did say that he thinks that there could be a little bit of duplication in that. So maybe we wouldn't spend all the ongoing costs this year because they might be covered, some of them in the one-time costs.
So is the restoration of the fire equipment budget, the 100,000, is that a one-time item?
So the fire equipment budget, so there's 200,000 that's been budgeted each year to cover any sort of equipment costs that might be needed. And in the current fiscal year, we did a budget transfer from that account to the fleet budget, which is under Public Works as part of covering the cost of the engine that was an oversight in budgeting.
So to your, your question, council member, so Mr. Ford has about $200,000 budgeted for that and we took 100,000 of it. So we're trying to put the 100,000 back into his budget. And that, that pays for things like turnout gear, there's jaws of life, things like that, that they need to have as part of their operating equipment budget.
So going forward, this budget would look more like 4.5 million on an annual basis? When you take out the one-time cost and, and the budget restoration?
Though, so they have been doing 200,000 every year.
Okay.
Plus the reserve costs to replace the fire engines and everything. Because we'll owe half of a fire engine in the future.
Okay.
Actually, it would be the full cost in 10 years of the engine because it's an alternating, they, they're buying the first one, we buy the second one. So we're not, we're not doing a 50/50 split on that. One of the things that we had discussed in the long-range forecast was about the fire expenditures and how they compare to prior forecasts. So here's some historical information in the Jim Rounds forecast. So he did have split up based off of how much was forecasted for ongoing compared to capital improvements. His forecast did not include those one-time startup costs for the regional station of the 781,000 because it was just really ongoing and capital improvements. I didn't see anything that was one-time non-capital items. So as you can see, for each of the years, going back to fiscal year 22 up through what we're budgeting for fiscal year 26, what Jim Rounds had forecasted compared to in fiscal years 22, 23, 24, those are actuals, 25 is an estimate, 26 is the estimated budget amount. And so you can see in, in several of the years that the ongoing was less. From the numbers, I believe what must have happened in the forecast was they thought the regional station was going to come on in '24, but it's not actually coming on until '26, based off of those numbers. But when you get to '26, the forecast was 4.3 million and the budget amount is 4.7. So yes, higher. And I do think that that has a lot just to do with inflationary aspects because inflation that occurred as a result of coming out of COVID started out slow, but then it started snowballing there for a while. And so I don't think that was really captured. On the capital improvements, based off of the numbers, it looks to me like the construction was anticipated in fiscal year 22 and then some of the other equipment items. Whereas really the bulk of what happened with the cost for the, the station was really 24 and 25. And at that point, construction costs had gone up a fair amount. But these are one-time costs. Any questions on that? All right. So moving on to development services. So this budget is going down slightly, 1%. There was a decrease in personnel costs of about 50,000. Increase in some of the costs for the rodeo grounds for maintaining and utilities of 20,000. So just small adjustments there. There were a handful of supplemental requests from development services. So the first one, starting on page DS-7, there was a request for a staff position for an engineering plan review tech that was proposed as a 50/50 split between development services and engineering. This is not recommended by the town manager at this time. There was a request for a second position for a lead permit tech. And again, this is something that is not recommended by the town manager at this time. The next supplemental request, starting on DS 11 is.
Just break in here.
Yes.
Are we, or is the rodeo grounds covering the operating costs with all the events that we have? Excluding the two major events, but except the, the fees we get, the $3. But are we covering our, our costs there?
Luke, you want to come up? My understanding is that we are, but Luke will address that.
I, yeah, I, I can't say. I, I know that we have staff that maintains and works that facility.
All the time?
All the time. For, if there's an event out there, we, we definitely cover the costs borne by the town by, for the event. But that's a facility that is, is really staffed Monday through Friday for an entire work here. So what we, what we recoup in event costs, we're covering.
But it's going into general, it's going into the general fund. So it's offsetting his operating costs. So he's assigning people to go work out there, but they're doing more work than just rodeo grounds, correct? They're doing facilities and other.
Correct. Yeah. So the facility staff is two, two employees. They work Gateway Park. They do maintenance for town hall and the court and sheriffs and the rodeo grounds. So they're working at multiple, the tourism bureau.
It would just seem to me that, that, that we ought to be looking at our fees and costs and see where we are in that. So we understand.
Absolutely.
Yeah. And then.
We will be bringing to you.
Some kind of performance standards. I mean, I, you'd like to cover the operating costs.
We will be bringing to council at some point later this year, a revised fee schedule for use of the rodeo grounds for events.
Right. We knew when we were, for instance, doing the turquoise circuit agreement. Luke worked behind the scenes on that and the surcharge is actually more than recovering our actual costs on that. So we're, we're actually awash with that.
Correct.
So we, we definitely need to, because when I started looking at $150 a day for a fee for the use of it, it just seems like there's no way we're recovering anything. But he so wisely included the, the seat ticket surcharge of, is it $3?
$3 per ticket sold.
So that actually is going into the general fund, but then the expenditure is coming out of his department. So it's, it's a wash, but it's not, it's not covering, it's a subsidy. It's not a hundred percent covering the cost. That's why we need to have the user fees look at us recovering full cost going forward.
The more events we can get scheduled out there, the better off we're going to be as far as cost recovery.
Yeah, I'm glad you mentioned that. We actually are booked weekends through the middle of May. Then no bookings through summer, which is customary. And then we're back starting in September, essentially just about every weekend, we have an event out there. So we're, we are event-wise, just about, unless we have people wanting to use it during the, the week, we're pretty, we're pretty full with events now. And that's actually, a lot of them have booked all the way out through December of 2026.
I think the increase in, in casual weekend book, bookings is one of the really nice stories about the rodeo grounds and what you guys have been doing out there.
Thank you.
So the, the next supplemental request is for automatic gates out at the rodeo grounds. This would be a one-time cost of $8,000.
Are those entry gates or those for the animals?
This is entry gates into the rodeo grounds and it could be programmed to open and close. And then if people are stuck, like they park back behind it, they can drive and it will open up.
Correct. Yeah. So we're looking at automatic gates, just making that facility more secure. We've also got one in for the Gateway Park as well. Right now, at the rodeo grounds especially, it's been my experience that we're constantly chasing keys and padlocks and everything else. And if we can actually control access a little bit better and that it'd be through this, we'd be better served because things have a tendency of locking off when copies of keys have been made and, and those kinds of things.
So the gated Gateway Park though, would that be used for after hours to close it when?
Once again, it would, it would be set on a timer where it opened at dawn and then closed at a certain time. But once again, have a sensor on the other side. If someone is at the park after dusk, that their vehicle can pull up, trigger the sensor and, and get out. Instead of, we talked about doing the stop spikes if you go over the wrong way, back up and.
Controlled now at Gateway?
We rely on our utility staff to go out at some point, basically the overnight shift to go out at some point and lock that facility. So it's very, it's very uncontrolled access that we have out there that we're trying to button up a little bit better. So. So.
Thanks.
Do you wanna respond to the next item?
Uh, next item, parking expansion enclosure, so uh, we are looking at expanding the parking area, the, we call it the the south lot. Um, out to our uh, the property boundary, the BLM boundary that we're in the process of acquiring with Maricopa County's help. Um, that area is open, it's really unfettered access, and we see a lot of occurrence of illegal dumping. Uh, trespassing, uh, people trying to overnight camp out there. So we wanna get that fenced off and access again controlled out there, so it's not a dumping site for uh, for the area. And that that's gonna require some fencing and and again, gates.
Is there any recent word on the BLM status?
Uh, no, I do have, um, I think the end of this week is my uh, monthly check in for status.
Of the titles being transferred?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it's been, it's been kind of the same response.
Which is why.
Working on it, we're waiting for BLM to respond to our application and our request.
How long's that been going on?
Uh, better part of six months, since they made the formal application. It's kind of RJ's, one of RJ's last acts of as county director.
Is he still a consultant or did he?
We have, well, we brought him on on a contract basis to do several scopes of work for the town. Uh, work is a go between with the town on several different projects, so his experience and also his. Uh, familiarity with different players around the valley is gonna be instrumental for us on a lot of projects.
He's got a great skill set.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Luke.
Yep.
Okay, so moving on, so the next uh, supplemental request is for. A budget for emergency repairs for Town Hall, that really apparently has not been in the budget before. Um, original request was for um, an ongoing budget of fifty thousand. Uh, town managers recommended uh, twenty five thousand um, for that one. Um, also, replacement of furniture and um, new furniture for any new um, needs or positions. Um, the request was for twenty five thousand and town managers recommended five thousand for that.
Is that practical, Grady? I know the Grady's been pretty miraculous about getting used furniture, which has been pretty nice.
Right.
From Holland.
I'm sorry, the Holland Center didn't have any furniture I could have taken, other than these chairs here. Um, I think it's practical, um, so. I didn't wanna really invest too much in this area, because I I didn't know if we're gonna go forward with. The capital project for renovation and expansion of Town Hall. Um, but if it is, I think that would be something we capitalize, so I wanted to keep it a minimal amount.
Um. The next item is for new security cameras here at the Town Hall complex. Uh, one time cost of seventy five hundred dollars, um, which is recommended by the town manager. Um, next is uh, bathroom renovation at the Desert Awareness Park. Um, this was one that is being recommended to being uh, performed by staff and just the materials that they would need. Um, to do the uh, renovation and replace fixtures and things like that, so. Um, that was recommended as well, and then the other automatic gate of four thousand dollars.
Mayor and council, just to let you know, we've had some vandalism in that restroom uh, restroom. And there's porcelain fixtures, which is just not the standard you go with anymore, so we're going with the stainless steel. Um, and it and it tends to hold up um, to abuse, so that's what we're doing.
Do we have any idea where that abuse is coming from?
Yeah, there's a group of homeless people that live out uh, in the wash back there. There's about twenty of them scattered in in our various washes around here. I've talked to people at at the Gold Mine and also Kiwanis, they say they generally come out at night. And that's one of the few bathrooms that they can get into, so unless we're gonna lock the bathroom doors there.
Yeah, um, I think that is a contributing factor, and I also thought I heard from uh, Marshall Stein that we might have juveniles as well. Like, when you've got the school breaks, they're in there as well, so I think it's a combination.
Do we really have twenty people living in town camping now?
I don't know.
Well, I quite, I'm talking about, when I was talking to some folks at the Gold Mine in Kiwanis, they said there's a number of them. That are living back in the washes, and they vary from time to time, may not be twenty at any one given time. But over the course of the last six months or so, they've seen about twenty different homeless people.
Thank you.
Um, so this is just the the totals of the supplemental requests from Development Services. Total request of about three hundred ninety five thousand of these recommended, um, eighty nine thousand five hundred. Um, there are some CIP projects um, that fall under um, Development Services, so with the rodeo grounds. Improvements to the VIP area. Um, this does include an assumption of cost sharing, fifty fifty cost sharing with the Cave Creek Rodeo Days. Um, the uh, next item is electrical service upgrades of a hundred thousand. So that one would be in the fiscal year twenty six budget. The um, CIP plan, so we do a plan for five years, but really what is part of the adopted budget will be just the fiscal year twenty six amounts. Um, other facilities, so for Spur Cross, um, talked about doing bathrooms, so um, that is the item here. Um, this assumes a fifty fifty cost sharing with Maricopa County Parks and Rec um, on these costs.
Eight hundred thousand dollars?
For bathrooms, yeah, does.
That's really informed by the the restaurants we put out at the rodeo grounds and assuming a, an increase in price since we did those three years ago. So our restaurants at the rodeo grounds were um, approximately six hundred and fifty thousand.
I saw that picture of the leach field underneath the arena.
Right, it won't be that substantial of a of a septic system, clearly for this project. But just kind of building in a, knowing that we're still probably two years out from actually putting shovel in the ground. Uh, eight hundred is a, is a safe number to to make uh, um, expectations or assumptions.
And that's an office too for the person that's out there?
That's hence the um, getting Maricopa County agreeable to the cost sharing factor component of it.
I think I read that you you would have to put in a septic tank.
We would.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Um, so the next one is for um, a shared parking agreement for Desert Awareness Park. Um, and so this assumes that Stagecoach Village would uh, manage the project and we would contribute a hundred thousand. Um, towards the cost.
And what use would we get out of that? This is. I was out there.
Mayor, we, this is the project that we discussed with the the HOA representatives for Stagecoach Village. Um, this is this project, so it'd be shared parking uh, for the park, um, and then also for them.
What, would it be, would it be locked up at night? Me, would uh, this be available at all times, or is this only at events?
So a portion um, would be available for. Um, it it's just open parking, and then a portion would be behind uh, it's essentially an expansion of the Desert Awareness Park. Parking lot currently, um, that would have that gate, but that's something that we could program to have open for events and different things like that, so it would be public parking.
Is there a lack of parking at Gateway currently?
Uh, when they have events specifically like the Belgian Waffle Race and things like that. Um, having the ability to park vendors in close proximity to um, Stagecoach Village. And then the access right into that commercial facility from Desert Awareness Park is very uh, very easy. So this is kind of, this is a shared, uh, this would be truly shared uh, endeavor. To to expand parking potential in that, in that area.
Is there potential for any grant funding for the Spur Cross project or the Desert Awareness Park projects?
Um, a, maybe a procurement analyst could answer that. I'm sure for for spur, for for spur cross, uh, for the spur cross ranch. Um, that's something that we'll continue to talk with with. Uh, Maricopa County Parks and Recreation about the potential for grants, they may know of something that we're unfamiliar with, as far as the shared parking with. Um, Stagecoach Village, really the hundred thousand. For us isn't a huge investment in what that overall project may cost, um, it would just be. Um, I I would say less than a third of what that overall project would run to implement that parking, so.
Can I ask you a quick question of Luke, it might not have much to do with that, what's going on with that old uh, Lelands or whatever it is across the street?
Sure, um, a local homeowner and businessman contractor, the contractor actually that. Uh, constructed the Skybox uh, API Construction uh, purchased that. And is renovating it for his uh, business office, he's tired of driving downtown. So he's moving his his business up to Cave Creek, his business office.
That's good news.
I should stay there.
I'll stay here.
Um, so the next project for the Town Hall remodel in addition, um, so. Right now is a, just an estimate on what the cost might be, um, we have an estimated range of anywhere from five to seven million. Um, the first year cost includes uh, four hundred thirty thousand for the property. Um, behind Town Hall that we are purchasing, we made a deposit. Um, which is included in that four hundred and thirty thousand, because we won't actually recognize those expenditures until next year when we pay the balance. Um, so uh, the remainder was um, design, um, and then the the construction costs in twenty seven. As I had mentioned earlier, the a balance that's in the capital improvements fund now. Um, would cover uh, eighty percent of the costs in the five year plan. Um, that are capital reserve funded, which this would be one, so um, we're already eighty percent there in total for all the projects. Um, to be cash funded. Need to add?
Um, with the sheriff thinking about moving the sheriff station. Um, is. Uh, with having that additional space, and and that's a really good contract for us, that's a really good, I mean, it's a good cash flow. It brings in money, a high end amount of money uh, every month, every year. If if we, if that space was turned back to us. Because they're looking for property, there's nothing, we talked to sheriff a couple weeks ago.
Right, they're looking for five acres.
Yeah, and they haven't found it yet, but um, that would free up, I don't know, how many, how many square feet is that over there?
Put me on the spot.
Big, little?
It's not, it's not as big as it seems.
So it seemed huge to me, but.
Um, yeah, off the top of my head, I I don't know. I don't know, I don't wanna put something.
Rationalize expansion when we're gonna get some space back that there is not a good use for. Uh, well, a real natural use.
When I first heard about this, I, there's a tremendous need in our community for um, a place to congregate. The library is is overutilized in our town, um, it's hard for us to get a space in there when we need it, like for the. The mayor's state of the um, town, or if we have a community meeting. So I I would love to see if that somehow could be turned into um, like, I don't wanna say a community center where we have programs and services, but. Like a meeting space that um, different organizations, nonprofit organizations in the town can use. Um, and so I think that should just be part of one of many different things that we could do. I think having the staff continuously in the same building, you have the adjacencies, the efficiencies. Makes a lot of sense, and don't get me wrong, I I do think if that were to happen, perhaps this could be reconfigured and bumped out a little bit. You know, we have, obviously, the court is in here, but there might be some other opportunities, so I I do think. Having a space study or space plan of this existing use and come back to the council. Maybe at a retreat of what we could possibly do, what the possibilities are. Um, but no, absolutely, uh, I think Teresa had mentioned to me that as a possible suggestion. That we reconfigure this, but it's not the s- the square footage that we have over there, so um. And you don't have the adjacencies, that's the only downside.
And we don't know when they're gonna move.
Yeah, so I, when I first heard it, I thought it was imminent, that they had already had the property. But at this point, they're still looking for the property, and by the way, if anybody knows of five acres in town, we'd love to have them in town still. Um, but it looks like they're gonna be getting, moving down closer, um, maybe to not far from where our fire station's being built by Daisy Mountain. So they wanna be closer to Anthem and be more central. Right, that's what I'm saying, but that location, that, you know, near that location, so.
Are those yearly contracts that they signed for this building to render?
Um, it's part of an intergovernmental agreement that we have.
Don't we have some open land that we could potentially purchase and then turn around and sell it back to them?
I don't know, off top my head, they, again, it's five acres that they need, minimum.
I'm talking about the, you know, part of the area that we were talking about developing, uh, or with state land. I mean, it might be worthwhile to take a look if there's any uh, open space that we're looking procuring right next to Carefree Highway. Yeah, but I. Carving out like five acres. Sales taxes from that land, I.
Yeah, that's primo.
I'm talking about the open space. We have some open space over there that's near Carefree Highway, as I recall, correct?
You know, it's a good, it's a good question, um, we'll look into it, I think they're three to five years out. From just in the discussion with Sheriff Sheridan on this. So we'll, we'll go ahead and.
Okay.
Look at what available land we might have, or or state trust land that we can um, possibly get into.
I mean, state trust land makes a lot of sense, but that'd be wide, that's, that'd be pretty huge difference for a.
Okay, so um, the next project is uh, essentially a placeholder for what we estimate the balance to be in the Open Space Acquisition Fund. Of one point five million, so that's really all it is at this point in time is, is just earmarking the entire balance as being available appropriated to spend. Okay, so moving on to the Tourism Bureau, um, so in the fiscal year twenty five budget. Um, it was um, basically eliminated the Tourism Bureau and wrapped it into the Communications Budget. And, but then, like, there was really no Communications Budget other than Tourism Bureau stuff, so it's, it's been a little weird. Trying to figure out how to manage all this stuff, so this is basically reestablishing Tourism Bureau budget. Um, the personnel cost, um, there would be the workers comp for the volunteers. Um, the marketing amount that was moved to Communications, essentially moving it back of the twenty five thousand. There would be the facility rental that is currently under Development Services for twenty four thousand and then miscellaneous, so. For a budget of fifty one thousand.
Luke, did you wanna talk a little bit about their new location that they'll be moving into after July?
Sure, uh, we just uh, enacted our lease uh, for space. Uh, approximate to the Dairy Queen, it's just to the west of the Dairy Queen, um, it's a tenant space. Slightly larger than their current space, and obviously um, much more prominent location as it's right on Cave Creek Road. Um, we got the keys for that last week, and I've actually already started um, doing some improvements like. Replacing doors and handles, um, control, you know, keypad access, um, and some other work. Um, and the Tourism Bureau will begin moving from their current location, their lease, we had a five year lease at that location. That comes to pass at the, at the end of June, so uh, we'll have, we'll have them moved out and settled in their new location well before that. Um, term expires, and then once their new season ramps back up, they'll be in that, that new location with um. Just some minor interior improvements, paint of maybe a demising wall for storage, that kind of thing.
Is there adequate parking there?
There is, yeah.
That's where the old newspaper was, correct, that went out of business years ago?
Um, I don't believe so, it's been a number of things, it was Bedazzled Boutique um, for a while, and. Uh, it's been ma- many different things, it's, it's a multi suite, multi tenant uh, commercial building. Uh, there's a plumbing contractor on one end of it, they're still trying to lease the the larger space right on the corner. Uh, we looked at that space, but the the difference in rent between the amount of square footage just seemed. Very, very high, so we we chose the uh, more conservative location. Um, so we'll have signs uh, generated, made, and put up at the building, so.
Um, there is one supplemental request under Tourism Bureau for uh, marketing and promotion program of a hundred thousand. Um, that was not recommended by the town manager at this time.
So um, we're wanting to, Sherry and I've had experience working in municipalities that have a destination marketing organization like a. Tourism Bureau, but they're officially recognized so that they can um, apply for Arizona Office. Tourism Bureau, but they're officially recognized so that they can, um, apply for Arizona Office of Tourism Grants. Go after some of the Prop two oh two money that the, uh, tribal communities have. And I think we need to get that established and that we can then. Supersize what we're spending on advertising and marketing and promotion. So I just didn't think this was quite the year for that. Um, I do also want to just say that even though tourism is a separate cost center. Uh, our communications and Public Affairs Director is very involved with that. It's starting to become more involved in. Hopefully making some decisions on how we advertise and where we advertise. Um, in the past, um, our, um, tourism. Uh, volunteer tourism, uh, coordinator has been very active in that, but that's something that, um, Bo is starting to become more involved in. We may be looking at some point in the future, um, making a change with. Organizationally where that function, um, sits, but right now I think it works really well. Luke has a good working relationship with, um, the tourism coordinator. And so I think for now, I think it makes sense. But probably a couple of years out, it would probably make sense to make a. Uh, a reorganization to, to move that under Communications, Public Affairs.
That, that, uh, two or three percent increase in, uh, sales tax revenue hardly covers inflation. So we're not getting a lot of extra business. Other than inflation increase.
Right. What, what's really, really neat if, if we can become a, um, DMO or a destination marketing organization. Is where we both have worked, um, a lot of the advertising costs are completely covered. If not covered, they're like fifty percent matched. So it really just, it, it. Gives you money that you otherwise would not have. It's like all the others are going after that slice of the pie and we're, we're not getting anything. And so. We think it would be something for us to go after. So, but I think this is the year. That we need to start putting that in place. So we can start going after grants.
We, we have no hotels here, as you know, we have no rooms. So when you're talking about who we're going to lure in here. From England or out of state. And the current advertising, I think the budget was twenty-five thousand, but I understand it went up to fifty. I'd like to see what we're advertising in, in the past, number one. And number two. We got six million people in this town, Maricopa County. Maybe we ought to focus a little bit on the East Valley and other places. Maybe, uh. The state get people up. This is a day trip right now.
It, it's absolutely a day trip and we'd love to be able to get resorts here, but I, you know. I, I just don't think that we either have, um, you know, the, the zoning or the. Wherewithal. I do think we have a couple of potential locations for hotels. But, um, that's probably about it. But I do think you're right. I think if you talk to people. This is definitely a destination for, for the valley locals. Um, but they also like to bring their out of town guests to Cave Creek.
Yeah, also I have Rancho Manana, which.
Absolutely.
Rentals and then, uh, you know, there's no reason why we couldn't attract a couple, uh, boutique hotels.
Absolutely. Yep.
What we need a long-term planning is to cover it to, uh, for a hundred thousand dollars to pay out, you'd need, uh, three point three million dollars additional. Sales.
Well, we were looking, to be honest with you, Mayor, I was looking at this being mostly covered by grants. So, but I didn't want to put it in this year, but. It's one of those things you have to invest money to make money, but I, I agree with you. That's, you just did the math.
Three percent of additional sales. So when you divide the hundred thousand by point oh three, it's a big number.
Right, I agree.
Okay, so we're hoping to get through one more department. Public Works, the, uh, base budget changes. So going from, um, just under one point five million to about three point four million. The big part of this is the transfer of the pavement preservation out of CIP into operating. Um, so. Significant change there. The list of the supplemental requests, so one of the items requested is a replacement of the wood chipper. For eighty thousand, that is, uh, one-time monies and, um. This is, um, pretty old piece of e- equipment, two thousand and six, um, item. And my understanding gets news. Um, and then the other, um, supplemental request here is related to that grant, um, through MAG. So the grant-funded portion, one million, three hundred and twenty-four thousand. The, uh, difference would be, um, a transfer from the general fund to help cover those costs of a hundred and twenty thousand. So, um, the wood chipper we have in the general fund, the pavement management in the streets fund. And, um, so the total recommended is, um, one million, five hundred and twenty-four thousand. When you net out the grant funding, really what we're, um, adding to the budget, um, as far as one-time costs is two hundred thousand for both of those projects.
When will we find out about the grant? We already have the.
We were notified of our award of the grant already.
It's good news.
We beat out Phoenix actually on their project.
We, we need a headline number. What I thought, somebody asked, I don't know who it was, asked the other day, how many miles of. Road are we fixing or paving? And that, that's the kind of number that people can understand. How many miles of road are we fixing or paving?
Well, right now we're fixing what you approved last Monday. We're fixing about four point five miles of road between chip, between, uh. Surface or between, sorry, cave ceiling or pavement replacement, including Thirty Second Street all the way out to the, um, park. You're replacing that. The grant funding will cover about two point five miles of roadway between Morningstar. Fifty-fourth Street and then going out to the park. And so we're working, we're starting to work with ADOT to, uh, get that money, uh, locked in. Uh, we have to pay of the hundred and twenty thousand, ninety thousand of it is our five percent share of the money. It's ninety-five percent money. And thirty thousand of it is to ADOT to administer the money. So it's a really good grant. And so we're really happy and we did get notification of, that we did receive it.
Hey Hal, you said, uh, this morning that we had seventy-five, um, miles of road in Cave Creek, I believe?
We have seventy-five miles of paved road, about eight miles of unpaved.
Okay, out of that seventy-five miles, how many miles would you say need to be improved or redone?
Well, that's where the pavement management plan comes in. What we. We have a new one coming in. We're finishing up our last pavement management plan now. And of that, what we're trying to do is trying to maintain a good rating for our, our overall roads with a. With, with less than a six percent, uh, or with less than a ten percent backlog. Backlog is when the road is just so totally destroyed that they put it off and they don't, they don't include it in the calculation. So right now we have about a six percent, as of the last management plan, we had a six percent backlog and we had a sixty-six. PCI and we're trying to get to a seventy-one PCI. So we're going to see where we are with this latest study.
PCI being.
So it's a rating based on the distress level and a seventy is where it goes to the good level.
Scottsdale, uh, targets eighty.
We're not Scottsdale, as I've been pointed out numerous times. So we're trying to get to seventy.
Yeah, I agree.
We encourage our residents to drive the Scottsdale roads. But spend your money here.
They have to give the federal government back over three hundred million dollars. Because they're not going to go.
They're thirty-one million.
Thirty-one, thirty-one million for the. The diamond traffic circle that.
But it's a lot of money though.
Penalties.
Plus penalties.
I watched, I watched that. That was pretty fun.
We're down, we're down to the finish line just about, so.
So for CIP projects, so, um, I've, I've grouped these, um, so the streets. There's, um, implementation of pedestrian, um, safety study recommendations. So budgeted a hundred thousand each year. Using capital reserve money, um, Cave Creek Road median enhancements, a hundred thousand each year, again, using capital reserve money. For Fortieth Street in Galvin, uh, this is mill pave and widening, which is why it's in CIP. Um, and that is budgeted for fiscal year twenty-seven. The Carefree Highway Improvement, um, IGA with, um, City of Scottsdale. So. There is some widening that would happen there. Um, and our portion is estimated at three hundred thousand. And so we have it in twenty-six. There is some question of maybe it'll end up getting pushed to twenty-seven, but right now we think it's twenty-six. And then we have the Military Road and Southern Bypass, which would be a new road connection. And that is in fiscal year twenty-seven. For drainage, um, the Desert Awareness Park Galloway Wash, um, so that is. In twenty-seven and twenty-eight and, uh, there are some grant funding that Hal is aware of that we would attempt to receive. So this assumes seventy-five percent coverage of, um, those funds with the, the grant monies. For the, um, Fleet Replacement Program, so, um, this is a variety of items. That would be in each year for fiscal year twenty-six, um, six hundred and forty-five thousand. Which would include, um, the skid steer, uh, water truck and the three-ton roll-off.
That's a lot of money for vehicles.
Well, some of these vehicles are, um, well past their prime. So it's six hundred and seventy-five, um, you know, for, for vehicles versus, you know, we just spent five hundred and. Five hundred thousand on one vehicle for fire. So some of these vehicles are, um. I mean, the ones we're talking about are twenty-year-old vehicles that are. One of them's a water truck that, uh, would take fifty thousand dollars to bring it back into service. So it's not worth, it's not worth paying fifty thousand dollars on a vehicle. To re, redo all the plumbing, redo the whole, uh, tank assembly and everything else. It's better to, you know. Let it go and get a new one.
One of the things that we can also look at for these, uh, large, um, equipment items. Is potentially doing lease purchase. Um, so if we can find a, a good rate, um, then maybe that's.
And you can do those calculations too.
I can do those calculations, but I, I would need somebody to tell me what rate they would be willing to offer.
I was just going to say, maybe it's a good idea to include how many vehicles are included under with these numbers, like how many? You mentioned four for six forty-five.
Yes, for this year, yeah.
Yeah, so, so the project is on, starts on page, um, PW dash sixteen. Or seventeen. We go ahead and bring off my pages. Um, and so each one of them are listed there. On, on the project sheet under the, um, justification, well, even the description section has. Them listed individually.
Oh, right, right.
So like, uh, fiscal year twenty-seven is, uh, includes a road grader and a dump truck. So that's why that, um, amount is so high. And the year after includes steel drum roller, um, backhoe and water truck and then, um, a Tahoe.
Now, our, our blade is, uh, nineteen ninety-three vintage.
Well, why do you, why do we need it? Why don't we just contract that out?
We did do some.
I've, I've never seen the road grader on the road. I've been here twenty years. Well, we paved Morning Star.
Spurcross, you're not helping us.
We need more, uh, more security.
No, it also, it also does our shoulders. It does the shoulders on all of our roads. Because, so that we can keep the, um, fire protection. So that we don't end up with people throwing cigarettes out. And so we grade all our shoulders with the, with the blade.
I'll be asking what the utilization time on it is.
It's pretty high. But yes, it's, but it's a, we've gotten our, like you said, Mayor, we've gotten our monies out of, money's worth out of it. It's a nineteen ninety-three.
Yeah, I, I don't doubt that we need to replace it, but whether we ought to. Rent or leases question.
Um, the last project is, um, not a replacement item, but a request for a new item for an asphalt patch trailer. And that's, uh, not programmed until fiscal year twenty-nine.
Could I ask Hal a quick question again? Um, two things, a military road. That's, is that going to be a, a potential bypass for traffic for Bike Week?
Uh, yes, that, the idea behind that is right now we're working with. The owners of the property. They're looking at doing some lot line adjustments. And so part of that would be get, to get the last piece of right-of-way that we need, that would connect military up with, um, Sunset. Skyline, military, military up with Skyline through there. And then it would be, allow people to come back in. Behind the, um, behind Herald's and end up going sense to sea. So it would give you a bypass route that would. Take you around, um, during heavy traffic through downtown.
But it's got some really steep ravines. Are we going to fill those in or what are we going to do?
Probably some, uh, we haven't gotten to the design level yet. We'd need to get the right-of-way before we look at it. But then it would probably be similar to what we did with the Royal, where we put in some culvert crossings. Underneath it and, uh, pass the flow so that we can keep, we can mellow out some of those steep terrain. It, it will be something that a passenger car could travel when we're all done. You won't need a.
You're going to pave it?
Possibly. We haven't talked about that yet. So right now, with, right now, we're looking at, uh, for seven hundred thousand, we'd probably pave it. That, uh. If we don't get that money, then it would probably be chipped, it would probably be, uh. The decomposed granite like we have, uh, on a Royal right now.
One last question, Hal. Where do we stand on a crosswalk from Stumbleinas across to Frontier Town?
We haven't looked at a warrant for a crosswalk there from Stumbleinas because yes, they do stumble across there. But right now we don't have a crosswalk planned. With a cross, with a crossing, you know, with a rapid flashing beacon and a, and a button. Now, we could consider that. We could consider those at, at, at a number of locations. But, um, we wanted to see how the three that we have are working before we invest more money.
That's fine, but for the record, there's been a lot of people that cross right there and I see people coming to a sudden stop that don't even see them. That's, that's probably the busiest crosswalk in town that doesn't have one right now.
I agree.
Okay.
We'll take a look at that.
Well, we have a hundred thousand dollars a year that we can spend on pedestrian safety. So that would certainly be one of the areas that we could look. Thank you.
Is that, that we're going to stop here?
Yes, we were thinking we would do utilities tomorrow and then.
Thank you. I, I think it's very well presented.
So Mayor and Council, um, just let you know tomorrow, we're not going to have all the overview stuff that we did. So we'll be able to get right into the utilities and. Their capital. The other thing is unfortunately, I would love to be able to help, let you just keep your books there, but tomorrow we got a court. So if you don't mind taking your materials with you. We would be glad to keep them in our office area. So you don't have to take them with you.
Does any objection during the meeting?